2022 meeting of the Santa Monica City Council. This is a special meeting. We have no closed session. So I'm going to ask everybody, all of you in the audience, please turn off your phones so they won't vibrate and disrupt the meeting. But now let's have the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Brock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Parra?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Negrete?
Here.
Councilmember Brock?
Here.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen?
Here.
And Mayor Hamelrich?
Here. And I guess we should move right into the agenda.
So the first item is adopt of a resolution to amend council rules of order and procedure for the conduct of city council meetings. And Assistant City Clerk Nikima Newsom will be presenting.
Good evening, Council. Happy first day of summer. Nikki Newsom, Assistant City Clerk, here to present on the council rule changes in hybrid meetings. Tonight, staff is recommending that city council provide direction to staff regarding changing the time limits for public comment, to provide direction to staff regarding order for hearing both in-person and remote public comment, and the discontinuation of the time donation to another speaker policy upon implementation of hybrid meetings. Number three, to provide direction to staff regarding the continuation of boards and commissions to meet quarterly and remotely until the end of calendar year 2022 or until the end of the first quarter of 2023, to implement hybrid city council meetings, beginning with the first regular council meeting in September, pending budget approval for staffing, and finally, to adopt the attached proposed resolution amending the council rules of order and procedure. At the May 24th council meeting, a study session was held to discuss modifying the council meeting format, as well as the potential for implementing a hybrid option to allow for public, remote public input for those members of the public unable to attend council and board meetings in person. The ideas that council coalesced support around, including setting a fixed public meeting start time for regular meetings of 7:00 PM, with 7:00 PM being the set time to end closed session. As a pilot through December 31st of 2022, consolidating the following public comment at the beginning of the meeting: special items, closed session, and all public agenda items, except public hearings. Comments for public hearings. Items that require public notice, such as appeals, zoning changes, and other items as required by law, will be heard when the items are called. Moving proclamations and other special items ahead of closed session. Moving the deadline for council member discussion items, or 13 items, to noon on Monday, eight days ahead of the council meeting. Having quarterly updates from council and add out committees. And implementing a remote public comment option for both council and board and commission meetings. In regard to time limits, at this time, I would first like to note that a grammatical error on page six of the staff report, where it states that council has approved consolidating all public inputs at the beginning of the meeting. The correction to that is that council discussed this at the last study session, where no action was taken. At this time, staff is seeking direction for any changes to the time limits on public input. Rule 15E of the council rules regarding time limits stipulates that members of the public shall limit their remarks to two minutes per agenda item for a total of six minutes per meeting. Staff is recommending keeping the six-minute maximum per meeting rule with a two-minute maximum per comment section. And this does not affect public comment where public hearings are required by law. Should council approve consolidating all public inputs at the beginning of the meeting, this change will take effect with the June 28th council meeting. This is how public comment would be handled during the management of the meeting. When you get to item four after roll call, that's where we would consolidate all public comment where pertaining to closed sessions, special agenda items, and consent calendar items only. And that would be for two minutes. And then after council returns from closed session, that's when we would hear special agenda items and consent calendar. And then that's when we would go into general public input for two minutes per person, and public comment on agenda items for two minutes per person. In regard to hybrid meetings, staff is recommending pending budget approval that hybrid meetings be implemented effective with the first regular council meeting in September. And for boards and commission meetings to begin at the end of the calendar year 2022 or at the end of the first quarter of 2023 in order to allow for adequate time to recruit for staff and to obtain and install the necessary technology to provide this service. In the meantime, should a member of the public seek to make remote public comment as a reasonable ADA accommodation for council meetings, they should contact the city clerk's office within 72 hours of a meeting, as stated on the agenda, to make such arrangements. At this time, staff is seeking direction on the order of public input once hybrid meetings are implemented with a remote call-in option. As you recall, during the pandemic, when we held meetings online, at one point, we had video public comment, and we also had people who called in. And we kind of switched back and forth between the two. We'd have like three video commenters and then three callers. So that is one of the options that we're proposing. Another would be to allow all remote callers to provide public comment first. That way, staff could be alleviated to then, you know, leave their duties and then, you know, go back to the people who are in person. Or we could do it vice versa and have all in-person speakers speak first and then have the callers, but then they're holding on the line longer. So it's kind of six of one, half a dozen of another. They each have their pluses and minuses to each. In regard to remote meetings, remote meetings will continue. I'm sorry, staff is recommending that council extend remote meetings for boards and commissions until the end of calendar year 2022 or until the end of the first quarter of 2023 to address the costs associated with additional staffing and training and obtaining the technology needed to upgrade facilities in order to hold hybrid meetings. Remote quarterly meetings will continue until departments are fully staffed. We anticipate this would occur sometime over the summer, at which point meetings will return to monthly but remain remote. The Human Services Commission, however, will meet bimonthly until the end of calendar year 2022, as voted on by council at the April 12th meeting. So again, here are our recommendations for this evening. I won't bother to read them all over again. I know you guys have them in the staff report. But I will entertain any questions or comments you have at this time.
And Mayor, we do have one speaker for this.
Great, so let's hear, well, does any, do you want to hear from the speakers before we hear from the public? The answer appears to be yes. No one's objecting, so let's hear from the speakers and then, or speaker, and then we will move to city council. Thank you.
Good evening. And looking at the staff report, my first question would be, why are you putting public input in the consent calendar before closed session? Unless, of course, is to take attention away from the points being made by the public on these items. It's also very interesting that all of those items are at the beginning of the agenda. But since you eliminated reasonable accommodations for seniors and the disabled, might it be a better idea to come back in closed session at 6:30 PM and allow public input, as well as the ability to come on any other agenda item if a member of the public chooses to do that? Then start your meeting agenda items after that. Wouldn't that be a better idea than trying to bury public comment before closed session, in addition to giving the public watching a better chance of hearing it? It's also confusing because under amending council rules, under I, public comment, allow members of the public to have the opportunity to speak on any items before or during city council consideration of the item. I fully support the public having the option to speak before or during consideration of the item as it is now. I support hybrid meetings, but I have to ask, due to the emphasis on the city clerk's time as to when and how the calls will be presented, I have to ask, will the hybrid meeting style be available only at the beginning of the meetings? I also think you should keep in-person time donation. Here, might the city clerk's influence be restricting the public's ability to speak? Isn't that the purpose of open public meetings? So the public can contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. And does that end public comment? So that ends public comment. Council members, does anyone have any comments? Yes, Mayor Pro Tim McCowen?
Nikki, do you mind going back to the slide that kind of had the order of that one? So this is the recommendation.
Well, yes, this is me. Yes.
Okay. And we broke out general public input from, so currently, if someone exhausts their six minutes, they still get two additional for public input?
No.
So this is allowing an additional?
No, it's still six minutes.
It's still six.
It's just broken up by the opportunities to speak.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm not totally understanding why we would break it up. If it's just about amount of time and the types of things. I understand sort of breaking up public comment for closed session because we stop the meeting, we go into that, and then we start again. But what would the purpose of be of breaking out public input from the rest of the agenda, public comment? If?
So the public, so the general public input is what we consider the 14 item now?
Yeah.
Where it's non-agenda?
Right.
And so people still use that time now, and they use the two minutes?
For sure.
And so the reason that we want to separate is because we want to separate those items that are not on the agenda versus those items that are on the agenda. Also, it'll make it easier for the legislative history if we needed to pull something out?
Because I'm trying to think, I was trying to think about this when I was looking at other meetings, and I just didn't recall the public input portion being separate from the normal agenda items. You just, people declare their time, and they speak on the item, and they would say, I'm going to speak on 14, or, you know. And so I just hadn't noticed. But, I mean, it makes sense. I just was wondering.
And just to let you know, so this is sort of an example that we pulled. And Palm Springs was one of the cities that we pulled from. And they had their general pub, they actually still left it at the end of the meeting. But it was separated. It was separated.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis.
No, thank you. So I just want to be clear because someone looking at that might think that you only have six minutes, because we only have six minutes total per meeting. Is that correct? But someone looking at this might think, well, I have to use two minutes on the public comment, and I have to use two minutes. So people who have six minutes and it's two minutes, however they want to break that up, right?
That's correct. So they could break it up and decide they only want to do one minute for, you know, the first public comment in closed session. They could only want to do one minute on general public input, and so on and so forth. The issue, though, is there's an issue with our programming for the equipment we use. We have it currently set up so that it's one minute, two minute, four minute. So we would have to make the programming changes in order to accommodate anything other than that breakdown.
Well, let me ask just how this would work then, because it seems to me the question is, let's say I'm a member of the public, and there are three agendized items I want to speak on. I don't get to say, well, I want to do five minutes on one, 30 seconds on another, and 30 seconds on another. The most you can get per item is two minutes, correct? Is that right? So that shouldn't be an issue. I mean, it seems to me people either have two, and we haven't talked about the donation issue, but potentially four. But no one's going to say, okay, I have three items, I want to spot five on one, 30 seconds on another. We wouldn't let them do that.
Two minutes max.
Okay. And then the other, oops, sorry, my iPad just decided to go to sleep there. And then the other question, I guess I, you know, the public comment for closed session, special agenda, and consent calendar items only, that I understand. Why did we put general public input after the closed session and the consent calendar? What was the thinking there?
I don't know that there, I don't know, refresh my memory, Denise, but I think. I don't think, I don't think there was, look, it could be flipped over where the general public comment. I think, I think the concern was, when you guys brought this up, that you wanted to have the general public come and speak ahead of. And so when you guys initially talked about separating out the accommodations and having all that before closed session, so that would be quick. And then the general public, non-related to the agenda, it doesn't matter. I mean, it was just, it was just a matter of that that's the way that we saw it in other cities or the way you guys talked about it. So if you wanted to flip it?
I mean, the only reason I ask is because those are the non-agendized items, 14 items. And it seems to me some people come just for that. And that way, they could speak at the beginning and be done, as opposed to having to wait through closed session. Because they may want to speak on something on closed session. I mean, it seems to me what we wanted, from my perspective anyway, is if we want to front-load as much comment as we can before we go into closed session, even though that might drag out the comment section longer because it creates more certainty for the public. I speak, I'm done, I'm gone, I go home.
So would you want, so this is for you guys to decide. So if you wanted to move the general public comment up along with the closed session, the special agenda, and the consent, that would be fine. I mean, we would separate it, but it would be heard first?
Right.
And then we'd do the other things.
Okay. And I don't know, are we just in questions or are we in comments now? Because I, okay. So my comment that I would say is, I would move general public input ahead of closed session. Just give those people who want to come and say, I want you to be aware that our Boy Scout troop did this. Or I want you to, you know, put a sock in it. Whatever it is they want us to do that's not on the agenda. And that way, they can come, speak, and leave. The other thing I would think about is, I think since we are going to go to hybrid meetings, we ought to do, because one of the things, at least my impression is, and others may disagree, is that the process for getting speakers, whether we do it via audio or video, but non-present speakers speaking, feels like there's a big chunk of time between each speaker. You know, you have to go get the speaker and clear the speaker. And then, then of course, the speaker has to go, can you hear me? And so it would seem to me, one, it probably makes sense to get that over and done as quickly as possible, and we can try and streamline that process. But two, for the reason you stated, since that takes additional staff, then we can let that staff go. And they no longer have to hang out. You know, I mean, unless there's something that's a designated public hearing that you might have someone just, but on a night where there's no designated public hearing, that staff could then be done and go. So I think it makes sense to hear the non-present speakers first in a group and sort of slog through that because it is a bit of a slog. And then when you have the in-person speakers come, it moves much more quickly. And I think by that time, then we'll be ready to move into the meat of the agenda. So those are my thoughts.
So I have a question. I'm sorry, does anyone else? So I'm thinking about what things we usually hear and what would allow public comment and what wouldn't. So obviously, anytime we're doing anything involving money, we have to have public comment, right? That requires public comment. And that will be with the item and not in either of the, any of these designated time periods. Is that right?
That is, it's for when it's required a public hearing.
Right. So for instance, when we change the water rates, it requires a public hearing. But what about, for instance, when we do, you know, something like we're doing now, amending the rules of order? Or what if we're doing something like hearing changes to the housing element? Would those have public comment in the meeting? Or would they have public comment before or during?
I'd turn to the city attorney for that question.
Well, legislative item, I suppose you could have the comment at any time. But quasi-judicial items, of course, it'd have to be contemporaneous. Like what we're doing tonight, I think you could hear that at any time.
Well, and that's what, because I've seen meetings, right? I mean, I know there are other cities who do this where basically everything that isn't quasi-judicial or taxing, you know, or rate.
Land use type things, you'd have a contemporaneous hearing.
Yeah, but anything other than those would go into this public comment on agenda items, right?
You could.
And we would hear all of that at once, other than those. And then here's what I wonder. So when you have that public comment and you have the two minutes, what if they want to, let's say we have an agenda like tonight, and tonight they would be entitled to do two minutes on one item and two minutes on the other item, right? What happens under the new system? Do they get two minutes total? Or do they get four minutes total?
It would be, well, it would still be broken up by sections. So if they were, if they were, I'm sorry. So if they're speaking on an item that there's an appeal involved or a quasi-judicial matter, that would be an additional two minutes for that.
But what I'm asking about is, let's say tonight, let's say we had a full-on agenda, right? And we were under the new system, and we had items 8A and 8B on our agenda.
Then all the, they would have just had the two minutes.
No, I think that's, I think that's wrong. I think the way we intended this, I believe, was that public comment on agenda items was a minimum two minutes. Because presumably, they can speak on one agenda item or more. If they're not utilizing the two other time slots, they potentially during public comment could speak on three different agenda items for up to six minutes. So I think that's where the confusion that caused all the emails started. Like, someone can have six minutes in public comment on agenda items. Just to Gleam's point, no more than two minutes on a single item. Okay.
So how would they break that up?
So what?
How would that be broken up?
Well, so that's where that becomes a little bit more administratively challenging for you all because you would have.
Excuse me, Phil and Oscar. Tonight is a rule night, so no side talking, please. Thank you.
So, so, sorry, I lost my train of thought.
How much time?
So you would have to keep track, like, so when someone signs up in person, it's easier, right? They would have to sign up for what items? And then they'd be given the amount of time. If they signed up for three public comment agenda items, that would be their max, and they wouldn't be approved to speak on public comment on closed session or public, general public input. So that would be sort of an administrative issue. But someone can have up to six minutes in the public comment on agenda items, assuming they don't use the other.
Maybe I'm oversimplifying it. But if someone stands up or calls in and says, I have three items, I want to speak on 8A, 8B, and 8C. I want two minutes on each. Okay, I'm going to speak on 8A, and you put the two-minute timer on them.
Yeah.
And when the two-minute expires, and you go, okay, now you're talking about 8B. I mean, I, that's why I asked Nikki. I said, I don't know that you need to change this because you're still only going to have two minutes per comment. So it just means you have to put a, you have to have them identify, I'm now speaking on this item, here's your two minutes.
I think it's just a matter of, had they spoken earlier in the evening, we would have to keep track of that, too.
But they keep track of that anyway.
Yeah, right, that's my point.
So, I mean, I'm thinking, I thought the problem was, if someone says, I'm speaking on three items, and that's a total of six minutes, how do you keep track that they only spoke for two minutes on 8A and didn't sort of blur over into 8B? But I just think you give them, you still just give them two minutes, even though they might be speaking on all three at the same time.
I see, I see the clerk. Madam clerk, tell me what you envisioned.
No. Actually, that was what I initially had envisioned, but it just is a lot of moving parts. And I, look, I guess we could, I guess we could make it work. And remember, this is only on a trial basis until December. But the question then becomes, someone would, and I need to hear from all of you on this. So someone comes up and they, and they're saying, I'm speaking on general public comment, they get two minutes. So will, are we, so is your thought that we're going to break it down item by item? Or does a person just speak and say, I want two, and they, like the appellant, to say, I want two minutes on this item, two minutes on this item, and two minutes on this item?
It doesn't apply to that because that's quasi-judicial.
No, 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 I understand. I'm saying if, so I'm asking you guys, are you saying that a member of the public would come up and say, I want two minutes on general public comment, two minutes on closed session, and two minutes on administrative item?
That would be six minutes. Why not?
Yeah, but no, because I think we, well, again, we haven't voted on it. But if the idea was that we were going to break these things up into separate parts, potentially putting the two minutes for closed session, special agenda, consent at the beginning, but putting general public input even before that at the very beginning, which I think is what Councilmember Davis was referring to, that that might be the first thing, then, and that's two minutes. Because that is one where, you know, I think you need to, I see the need to separate it out because it can get blurred if we don't. And then we would go into public comment for the closed session, special agenda, and consent. And that potentially, you would have two minutes for each because someone right now could get up to two minutes for consent. They could get up to two minutes for close. And so that could be up to four or six minutes that they could use if they wanted to, all there. Then we'd go into closed session, we'd return, we'd start into our public comment on agenda items. And depending on what they have left, they would potentially have another two, four, or six minutes after that.
So my question to you all is, would we call it by item? Or would we just have people randomly come up?
I think it has. I think it has to be part of what they're declaring in advance. And so we know, and then the timekeeper just has to be, you know, so maybe it's not, you know, you might need another person. Or maybe not.
I mean, no, it's just, no.
I mean, it.
So again, so would, so would it be, would the public comment be received by item?
No, it would be, no. No, it would be, no, it, so the way I've heard it done, although I've not heard it done exactly the way Kristin is talking about, what I've heard is people call in, um, and not say, not have times, I guess, a, and just say, "On this item, I think this. On that item, I think that, and on the third item, I think you're all idiot." You know, whatever they say, a, and they say what they want to say in the public comment period about what's on the agenda, and then it's done, but they talk about everything that's on the agenda all at one time. So that's what I've heard done.
They have a maximum. I was going to say, they have to have a time limit, I would say.
Yeah, well, I would-
They have a max amount of time. It doesn't address Councilmember Davis's point of not more than, but maybe it solves the donation time.
I, I guess my response would be, no, you don't, you don't try and say, "Okay, here's somebody," because, especially since we're doing hybrid meetings, "This person's calling in on item 8A and 8C."
Well, we're not, so let's get this off the table. We're not talking about hybrid meetings right now.
Okay.
No, we're just talking about-
I just think what you do is you go through the list, the order they call, they, you ask them what items they want to speak in and how much time they want. And they may only want one minute for public, for general public input. A lot of people only want one minute for that. So they get their one minute, you go through all the general public input, and then you go through the public comment for closed session. I don't, it, I think it would be a nightmare to try and break it down and say, "Here are all the people talking about item 8A. Here are all the people trying to talk about item 8B." I think that would make you crazy. And you would come up here and stab us. But I just think people just start talking and they, and we tell them, "What item are you speaking on? I'm speaking on item 8B. Boom, here's your two minutes. Okay, now I'm speaking on item 7A. Boom, here's your two minutes, whatever." I, I think that, I mean, that's how it's done in most jurisdictions.
So we're still going to separate, so my question is, so we're still going to separate general public comment and then the closed session, special agenda, and consent versus the public comment on the rest of the agenda items?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, but, um, do we need to talk about the six minute, minute limit? Yes, Councilmember Parr.
So I have a question. If we separate it out like that, does it allow the caller to comment after an item or they're just commenting? Because-
We tried to set it before. Everybody, all of these are before the items.
Because, I mean, a lot of the emails that we've been receiving are people indicating that they want to be able to comment once we, you know, we've, we've had an agenda item.
Well, they never get to do that because the order of our, uh, look, we could, I mean, it could be, but the order of what we do is we have a staff report, then we ask questions, and then we take public comment. So they've never heard our discussion until, you know, unless you want to change it after we speak, and what good does it do after we speak because we'll have voted? I, I mean, we want their input before we start discussing among ourselves. Do, no, do you not think that's right?
No, no, I, I, so maybe I didn't word it properly.
They wanted to have an opportunity to speak after, um, the presentation-
Each staff report?
Yeah, yeah. And so, right.
Right, it is currently.
Yeah. And so this, what we were discussing or what you guys were discussing would take away their ability to do that, is what I was asking.
But, but who knows? This is the thing-
It's just a trial, it's just a trial. No, I understand that.
We've always done it this way, and, and if we don't try it a different way, then everyone will always-
Understood, and that's why I was asking if this way that was being proposed was doing that. So I didn't word it wrong.
Councilmember Brock.
So the 14 items and public comment on closed session, special agenda, and the three items, the consent items, would move up to right after we start our meeting. Correct? And then we'd go into closed session. That, I understand. I think that's a good idea. We get rid of 14 items, general comments at the start of the meeting, et cetera. But then I have an issue because people in the city have always wanted to hear the staff report and they start to hear the questions from council, and then they can call in and comment, and they're able to make more of an informed comment session rather than at seven o'clock, they have to unload whatever they want to say in this confusing time schedule. And then they're done. We're having, we just spent half an hour, 35 minutes, just talking about the time schedule. So, um, I, I believe residents want to hear a staff report. They deserve to be able to comment on the item. I know we were trying to see if we could save time. I think we're going to lessen public input this way, but I'm in favor of number four on there, including the, uh, general public input, which is a 14 item at the start of the meeting. I personally am not in favor of taking all public comment on agenda items and lumping it at the beginning because I think residents want to feel that they have an impact, they have an impact during the discussion for that item. They won't feel they have, uh, input if all public comment is at seven o'clock and they'll think that the, that the city council at 11:30 or midnight is going to be a little bit fuzzy on what that, um, constituent said four hours before about an item, and the constituent might have changed their mind on what they were going to say, depending on what the staff report was, what the beginning council questions were, and they would be able to answer that more directly. So I, I'm not in favor of that part.
So let me get it straight. You're in favor of having the pu, uh, the 14, the, the general public comment at the beginning of the meeting, the public comment for the closed session, et cetera, um, a, and the public comment for the closed session? So all public comment other than comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting?
Can be moved to the front.
Right, can be, all of it moves to the front, and then comment on agenda items themselves stays with the agenda?
Absolutely.
A, and, well, this was going to be a pilot where we were going to try something different. And I understand that we're all attached to this, but maybe we should do it, try it for a shorter period of time? No, okay, so.
Do you mean do the trial for-
You're putting the staff through a lot of work in that case.
Do you mean do the trial for, like, three months and then?
Yeah, I was saying, whatever. I mean, I, I don't know, um, look-
I mean, because at this point, at this point, we're just moving the general public up and then we'll hear pretty much all of the consent and all of that first. But then we still have the remainder of the agenda that just will stay the same.
I think part of-
Let me, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Davis, then Councilmember Brock, and then Mayor Protem McCallum. I'm sorry. Well, I thought the reason we were doing this was to try and run the meetings more efficiently, and there's no doubt that having the public comment divided up agenda item by agenda item is not very efficient. I mean, we've all sat through enough of these meetings. The other thing is that what we've heard particularly, if we, and I know you say we're not going to hybrid yet, but we are talking about eventually going to hybrid, is people, "Oh, I fell off the phone. Oh, I couldn't do this." You know, I mean, the longer people stay waiting to get on the phone or it's just, I mean, we've had some public comment that was supposed to be two minutes, it took six minutes to get out. And, and if people are concerned about the length of meetings, particularly when we go back into a hybrid environment, I think we need to look for ways to try and move through the public comment more quickly. The other thing is that, and, and this to me was important, was that by putting the public comment on agendized items earlier in the evening, it actually, I think, increases the ability of people to participate because there are a lot of people who don't participate now because whether it's in person or hybrid, they can't sit on the phone or stare at the computer or be here in person for five hours to wait for the item they care about. But if they're given the option of speaking at the beginning, then they know, okay, by seven o'clock, 7:30, I'm going to be done. I can go put my kids to bed, I can have a meal with my family. Now, I understand there's concern about, um, what, will we remember what they say? Hence, pens and paper, where we can all take notes. And I also think, and I'm just going to be honest about this, I've been doing this a while, as have all of you, and I rarely listen to public comment where someone said, "Oh, you know what? I heard the staff report and that changed my mind." In fact, quite often, we will ask questions and they will clarify something and the public comment will still ignore the fact that that question's been answered. And that's just because I think people have in their mind, "This is what I want to say about this item," which is fine. But I just think that if we are looking for ways to make the meeting shorter, make them more humane, not just for us but for the public at large, we ought to try this and see if it works. And if it doesn't, and I forget what the proposed pilot period was, if at the end of it we're finding, "Oh, my God, I, you know, this just isn't working," then we can rethink it. But I, I, I think we need to do some, I mean, I am not the one who's been complaining about the length of the meetings. Maybe it's because I've gotten used to them and maybe it's because I'm nocturnal. But I think that if you are concerned about the length of the meetings, this is something we can do to make them run more efficiently, and I think we should give it a shot. And I don't think that the objection's like, "Well, we'll forget what they say or they won't have heard." I mean, the staff report is usually, um, I don't want to use the word regurgitation, but a re, a recitation of what's in the written staff report, which is what they're reacting to. So they already have the staff report, it's, it's in the agenda packet, and I think they can react to that in, in comments. I just, I'm, I think if our concern is to try and move the meetings more efficiently, we need to try to do something different, and I think not moving the public comment on agenda items, we're really only sort of rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic.
Mayor, I'm sorry, um, oh, okay, you're next, and then Mayor Protem-
So I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, Councilmember Davis. I, I believe that most people, for instance, on a development agreement or whatever, if they speak on that, they're going to listen to the rest of the meeting or be here and listen to the rest of that item. I don't think they're going to make their comments, shut off the phone or the TV or whatever and, and forget it. And I do hope that, obviously, I'm very much in favor of the hybrid meeting, but I'm also in favor of the clerks finding a way to do this on a different system, which I think they indicated teams instead of blue jeans, which will make it a quicker, smoother process. They've gone through this for two years, and it's been a nightmare for two years despite their absolute best efforts, it's just the system. So, you know, I think we can have it done quicker without all the waiting and the interruptions for the hybrid part. So I will maintain my position on that, but just because I believe that people want to comment on a particular item and they want to comment when it's immediate to the council regardless of whether we have pencils and a legal pad. Thank you.
So, um, I, I, let me get my notes that I took.
Good, I'm so glad you did.
You know, this did, this was born out of our, our retreat. Um, this idea started there because there was, um, you know, a lot of sentiment expressed at that time that the meetings needed to be more efficient for reasons that Councilmember Davis stated, for efficiency purposes, for accessibility purposes. And we were trying to figure out how to, um, how to, how to help the public be more engaged and give them more opportunities. And then we all sat through that really unfortunate incident where the, the Boy Scout troop had to leave because, um, they weren't just able to do all of their stuff at the beginning and had to wait for us to return from a closed session that went two hours longer than anticipated. And, um, that happened with the county assessor, and it, it happens a lot. And, and, and I do think to Phil's point, to Councilmember Brock's point, moving the comment for closed session, special agenda, and consent up to the front would alleviate those two examples that I gave, but it wouldn't solve what I believe is a bigger problem, which is not making these meetings accessible to everyone. And when I think of Councilmember Brock, what you just said about, you know, most people, if it's a DA or something, they'll come, they'll make their comment, but they'll want to sit through the whole thing to see how it all ends up. Sure, if they don't have kids at home or something else to do, but there are a lot of people, I think, that are concerned about development agreements, are concerned about land use, are concerned about a whole host of other things. And if they knew that if I come at 6:30, I will be out of there before 7:30 or 8:00 PM most likely, especially if I come early and sign up early to register myself, that I might actually get out in time to give my kid a bath, they're going to do that and they'll actually be more engaged. And so I think on a trial basis, we, we owe it to our community to try something new because, no offense, this is kind of broken. This is not working well. And, and yes, our agendas are very crowded. We can't do anything about that right now where everyone's trying to self-edit and adjust 13 items, and I don't think people should necessarily have to not bring 13 items to make our council meetings shorter, but if we could at least give the community an opportunity to be more involved in all of that. We had pedicab drivers here that didn't get to speak until like 2:00 AM. I mean, I, I don't even want to think about the revenue they lost and our city lost because they were here waiting the whole time. So I, I, I think we need to try it out. I think that maybe, like, to your point, Councilmember Brock, three months may be too short, given that staff's going to have to kind of ramp up to then come down. Maybe December 31st is too long, I'm not sure. Um, but I think we need to try this out.
So, um, I, I have another question, right, that I think actually speaks to what, a, and, and could. So if somebody came at the beginning of the meeting and said, "I have public comment," you know, "I have, let's say, public comment and I have, um, uh, I have general public input, et cetera," and then they start talking about an agenda item, are we going to stop them and say, "Oh, no, you have to wait to talk about the agenda item till we get to it?" I, I mean, once we start doing things in a collective way, I think that we need to either do it in a collective way or not do it in a collective way. But look, I can tell you that if I had a choice between going at 11:00 at night or saying, "I have general input" and saying what I was going to say at the beginning, I'd come at the beginning and say it, and I think most people would. So why not just try letting them say it at the beginning of the meeting? There may be some people who hate it, but I think that there may be a lot of people who really like being able to come, to do what they do, and go home and watch on TV. Councilmember Brock.
Are you suggesting both? In other words, people who wanted to comment at the beginning of the meeting on any items, right, in number four up there, could do it, but if they wanted to wait and comment when that item is called, they would have that ability, too?
No, I'm not suggesting we let people speak twice on it.
No, I didn't say speak twice. What I said is that, that they could choose if they wanted to come and speak at 5:30 and get all their comments out of the way, they could. But if they wanted to wait till the item's called, you could still do public comment. If there was someone else, not the same person, right, but someone else who wanted to speak, they could speak then. So we would give the option, and maybe Councilmember Davis and Councilmember, and Mayor Protem McCallum are correct, that most people will choose the front load, but if they don't, then we would have that option. And then, and let's say at the beginning of December, we would be able to pick the option that works the best. We, the clerk's office would be able to say, "89% of the people spoke at the beginning of the meeting. They got all their comments out of the way. They spoke on item six, item 9A, item 13. They're done, they went home. But if someone wants to stay and speak when that item's called, it would shorten the time when the item's called, but we'd still have the ability to say, 'Does anyone want to speak to that item now?'" So I would support that.
I would say, I think administratively, that's going to get very cumbersome, particularly when we move to a hybrid model, because then are we going to ask the people on the phone, "Do you want to speak now or do you want to wait?" You, you know what I mean? You're juggling two different formats.
Well, but they would be able to, if they're on the phone at 5:30 ready to speak, then we could ask them, "Do you want to cover everything right now?"
I, I just think administratively, it's, it's-
Administratively, you're in a mess anyway.
Uh, Councilmember Negretti.
I just wanted to say that I think if we give too many options, it's going to get confusing. Oftentimes, I see people are confused with what they're supposed to talk about as it is, and I also agree that people come prepared with what they're going to say. I think we have young people who want to come and speak, and, you know, I remember coming when we were fighting for soccer fields, and I think that earlier we can let the public speak, we let them. Can I make a motion to-
Sure, please.
Well, I'm going to try this one out, so.
But you have to do it on, I mean, I would do it on all of those, right?
Give me a second, I'll move to the, they'll run down the list or something.
Where are you looking at?
So I would- No, she has my list.
Oh, she has yours.
Yeah.
So I'm making a motion to-
So here, go down here. Call for direction, right?
Direction to staff regarding changing the time limits for public comment.
So can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
So, so I just want to clarify. So the direction is to move the public, general public input up to the beginning where there's public comment, I'm sorry, special meeting, closed session, and consent. Is that correct?
Right, and not doing it by item.
Doing it by item. And then that time limit, they could use their six minutes there, they could divide it, two minutes, two, however they want.
Right.
And then the remainder would be when you guys come back from closed session.
Right.
And then they could use, they could divide their time, however they want it.
However they want it. All six, two, four, one, five, three, three.
I'll second the motion.
Is that, was that it? That was the motion?
No, no, your motion is, like, okay, so your first motion, this is how you do it, right? So start, uh, so I would usually call for this, so I'd like to move to-
Okay, so I'm moving to provide direction to staff regarding order of hearing both in-person and remote public comment and the discontinuation of the time donation to another speaker policy upon implementation of hybrid meetings.
Okay, so what you're saying is that you want to provide direction to have a public comment for general public comment and, um, and, and public comment on closed session, et cetera, uh, before we go into closed session, then have public comment on general agenda items other than quasi judicial when we get back from closed session. Is that right?
I think you should make the motion. You're reading it. And I'll second it. Because I just-
Seven o'clock, because we'll be back at seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, yes. Yes. So I seconded, so that was basically your motion. I just rephrased it. So the motion is that we will have a first period of public comment on consent, what we used to call 14 items, it won't be 14 anymore because now there'll be like zero. So 14 consent, uh, consent and, um, and, right, and closed session, all at the beginning. Then when we come back from closed session at seven o'clock, we will have, um, public comment on all the agenda items, and we will do this for a trial period, um-
It's through December, are we deciding on the trial period here? December 31st?
The proposal, the proposal out of the, um, the study session was till December 31st.
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Negretti, seconded by me, and, um-
Can I ask a question? Do we need to adopt the attached proposed resolution? We can do that, we can do that in the second one because we still, because we still are asking for the, um, continuing the boards and commissions to meet remotely, to meet remotely until, until the end of the year.
So Madam Clerk, I have a question. There are two other names on the list on, on my computer.
I saw that, but that was after, after the public hearing closed, after closed session. Did you want to vote to hear them?
Um, do you want to hear public comment?
Yes.
Sure.
So by a- Should we do it like we used to do, move to here for one minute?
Yeah, we can do that. Move to here for one minute? Okay, good. Uh, by acclamation, I, okay, we'll hear, uh, so let's start with Ms. Zaraska and then we have David Morris. No, no, there are-
Oh, okay. Okay.
Oh, okay, so, um, sorry. So, uh, I'm sorry, and I didn't notice this. I just looked at the screen and saw that. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, let's have a roll call. Oh. Oh, Councilmember De La Torre.
So, no, I, I think it's pretty clear, you know, in terms of the, the time allotments and all that, and, but in the, the question of donating your, your two minutes, we're voting on that now. And, and so we're, we're saying that if, obviously if you're calling in, you can't donate, but what about in-person? We, we, I think we should still allow in-person donation.
I think what we're saying is when we move to hybrid, is, is that what we're saying? When we move to hybrid, we'll get rid of donations?
That is correct.
Yeah, but what I, what I would, what I would like to, what I'm supporting is to allow the donation if you're in-person. If you take the time to come here and you have a little longer presentation, you should be able to say, "Hey, look, we're here." You know, so in-person donation is okay, but obviously if you're calling on the phone, it should not be.
But would the donee also have to be in-person?
Yes, everybody has to.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking is, I'm asking.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, and I, and that's, that is friendly.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
And, and, but no hybrid donation.
Right.
Okay, good, okay. So, so is the motion cleared, everybody?
Yes.
And that was a good suggestion, so now let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Parra.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
No.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
And Mayor Hemmerich.
Yes, so that passes six to one. And now, I'm calling for a motion, I'm gonna make this easy this time, to provide direction to staff regarding the continuation of boards and commissions to meet quarterly and remotely until the end of calendar year, in other words, December 31, 2022, or until the end of the first quarter of 2023.
And Mayor, I want to say that, did you want to tell her about the quarterly? So the quarterly is only until they are fully staffed, and we anticipate that to be this summer. So it's more remotely is what we're asking for direction and for, and for, that's what we're asking.
Okay, well, so let's start with, may I have a motion that boards and commissions should meet remotely until the end of calendar year 2022? Okay.
So wait a minute, can we have a little bit of discussion on that? Because I had some concerns about, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Because I had some concerns about, you know, some of the commissions and boards meeting quarterly, especially.
So we're talking only about remotely now, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, so we separated it out because.
Okay.
The clerk said that we aren't talking about quarterly, and, and by the way, I noticed that, that for instance, so whatever the new commission is, is bimonthly, so.
Yeah.
But for right now, we're only talking about whether they'll meet remotely versus in-person.
Okay, and so can you please clarify for me which ones are meeting right now remotely, and which ones are meeting in-person?
Everybody's meeting remotely.
Everybody is still remote.
Except for ARB, right?
And I think the airport, I think the airport's been in person. Everybody is. The remote, yeah.
Oh, ARB is remote, okay.
Yeah.
So then we're talking about everybody continually, continuing to be quarterly?
Remote.
No, remote only. Oh, remote only.
So quarterly is only for those that, that aren't fully staffed, and so we're anticipating that through the summer, the departments will be fully staffed. So we're just talking about remotely meeting.
But, but let's separate this. Hold on, we'll talk about the quarterly in a minute.
Okay.
But let's start with, do we agree that they should all meet remotely at, at least until the end of this calendar year, and possibly through the first quarter?
And do you guys need a justification for that? That is because if there's funding, and we have to deal with that, remember all of the costs that were associated that we showed you last time, that it would take to bring all of the facilities up to be able to do the hybrid remote call-in meeting as well as in-person.
Nikki referenced it.
Okay, so.
That's the reason for that.
Right, so do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem McCowen, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Negretti, may we have a roll call vote, please? Yeah, Councilmember Brock.
I, I think we should shut this motion off at the end of this year, and we can vote again if we wish to continue it next year.
The remotes?
The remotes, and there is, I, I keep hearing through the end of this year or through first quarter. So I'd like it to expire December 31st, and then the council could vote to continue it at that time for 2023 if necessary. So that would be my request for a friendly amendment.
And then that's friendly.
Okay, so is that friendly? Yes, okay, so that's a friendly amendment, so it will, it will be till the end of 2022, and then we'll revisit the issue. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Parra.
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Hemmerich.
Whatever you are, yes. Wait, did you get the Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good, sorry, because it, that was, okay, so now let's talk about how regularly, if, I, I think this is very hard, because we don't really have a handle on who's meeting quarterly, who's meeting monthly, what staff is gonna be, any of those things, and I think this, the idea of how frequently they meet is a complicated question. But if somebody wants to try a motion on it, that whether boards and commissions meet quarterly, by monthly, which ones meet when, I mean. Yes, Councilmember De La Torre.
I mean, my, my preference is to, is to allow the commissions to decide, you know, some commissions need to meet more, some less, for, for whatever reasons, but I can just, I want to speak on the Housing Commission in particular, because I've had some experience in, in working with the leadership and also the members of that commission. There's, there's a lot of new members, and, you know, I think more experience, more meetings would probably be better for them to get into, you know, some, some best practices. There's also a lot of training that's needed. We've identified, you know, the need for more training, orientation for those new members. And also there's just, you know, really critical issues. I mean, tonight, for example, we're discussing the housing element, affordable housing, housing in general is such an important issue in our city. So I think, I want to, I just want to advocate for the Housing Commission to meet monthly at this point, because I think it's, it's just better for the city and for those commissioners to do so. But I'm open to having the other, the other commissions, you know, if they, if they think quarterly is, is, is more realistic and better for them, then I'm, I'm open to that.
Councilmember Brock.
I, I agree with what Councilmember De La Torre says in principle, and I don't know if we should be legislating how often each commission meets at this point. We're now almost two years into this, and some commissions need to meet more often, some commissions may not. But if they have business, the chair and their department head for the, or their advisor from the city should meet and discuss that. And I don't know if we should be at the point where we're legislating that for them right now. I think the, the commissioners we've chosen for the various commissions as volunteers, I think they should have that say.
So I may be confused, but am I incorrect that in our code, it tells the commissions how, I mean, most of the commissions specify how frequently they're meeting?
Once a month.
They're different, each one is different.
They all have different bylaws.
I'm sorry, say that again.
They have different bylaws on how often.
Yeah, they all have different.
And let them hatch it out without us.
So i- is that a problem for the clerk?
It's not for me, it may be for some of the departments. I don't speak for all of the departments, but I, as far as I know, all of the departments as of this summer will have the, the reason you guys, they were meeting quarterly was because of the lack of staffing.
So what if a commission decided they wanted to meet every week? Would we do that?
Probably never done that.
Monthly.
So just, so just, let me give you an example, the Urban Forest.
Task Force.
Yeah, the Urban Forest Task Force, they were meeting monthly, and then throughout COVID, they were meeting quarterly, and they determined that it was better to meet quarterly. So they had their bylaws changed, they voted to change their bylaws. So they are now meeting quarterly.
Um, well, yes, I, I think that, so I, I'm just gonna say that I think we should leave it to the discretion of the commissions, but I think with the proviso that anything more than one meeting per month has to be approved by the city manager, say, or, or somebody, us. Yes, and I see the city managers in the queue, so thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council, I just, what I want to just be deferential to, I think the only amount of flexibility we would truly need, really, because just, does come down to the issue of staffing. So again, I wasn't here, but my understanding of the history, and the city clerk can correct me, or maybe the Assistant City Attorney could correct me, or Deputy City Manager, was that we got ourselves into the quarterly pickle because of the staff reductions. And so as the city clerk mentioned, council has authorized us to, you've authorized staffing so that we can get to regular meetings with the commissions, and, you know, the expectation is for the summer. So I think the only proviso that we really need is the flexibility to the extent that we don't have staffing for the commissions, but I think that's largely been resolved. Is that correct, Denise? In terms of you've allocated to us, we're just, we have to hire folks.
So, so let me try this, so, so I think, I'm gonna make a motion that, and let's, oh, yeah.
Could we weigh in on something, please? The Charter does say that for the Charter, boards and commissions, they shall meet at least once per month.
The Charter, but, but what are those, planning?
Planning, commission.
Wrecking Park, libraries, personnel board, and the airport.
Personnel.
Not housing.
Recreation. Recreation and parks.
And airport.
Airport.
It's five of them.
Okay, so, so let me try it this way, thank you, that's helpful. So that all charter commissions shall meet once a month, that other commissions may decide how frequently they'll meet, but no more than once a month, and, and we will revisit this at the end of the year. Councilmember Brock.
I, I just question why we need a motion at all.
Because it can say the witness.
We don't really need a motion.
Because they're meeting quarterly now.
But, but that would be ending anyway. Do we really need a motion to say, "You, you don't have to meet quarterly anymore, you just go back to your normal rules"? It just seems a little, no, it just seems excessive.
I hear what you're saying, and I'm looking, it's in, so let me turn to the city manager and say, "Do we need to do this?"
My gut tells me I don't think so, to be honest with you.
But then we're gonna move on, thank you.
I think we're good.
Moving on, may I have a motion, please, to implement hybrid city council meetings beginning with the first regular council meeting in September, pending budget approval of staffing?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Brock, seconded by Davis, any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Parra.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
And Mayor Hemmerich.
Yes, and now, I was gonna call for a motion to adopt a resolution amending the city council rules of order and procedure, but do we have that resolution right now? I get it, but it's, but haven't we changed it? So it's not.
Well, it could be as amended tonight.
Okay.
We can conform the changes.
Okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion to adopt the resolution as amended on the dais tonight, amending the council, city council's rules of order and procedure. Now, I'll move it, second.
Second.
Moved by Hemmerich, seconded by Davis. Any discussion? May we have a roll, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
No.
Mayor Protem McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Parra.
Yes.
And Mayor Hemmerich.
Yes, that passes six to one.
Thank you all.
And now we will move on to the main feature.
The next we have item 8B is the housing element draft red line revisions, and we do have one speaker, Denise Barton, on this item.
But first we'll have our staff report. Thank you. We've had a changing of the guard.
If I use one name, you get two people answered.
Yeah, right, so I think, saying David will not work.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jing Yo, planning manager, pleased to be here tonight to bring back to the council draft red line revisions on the housing element. This is the product of four months of really hard work since we've gotten the letter, and I just want to acknowledge the planning staff you see here that have been burning the midnight oil, so to speak, to, to get to this point. So just to review the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's for the council to review the draft red line revisions, which are attached to your staff report, and to direct staff to transmit those draft red line revisions to HCD. And I want to note that the red lines here really focus on the changes necessary to get to a compliant housing element. It is not intended to revisit policy decisions that the council approved with the adoption of the housing element in October. It's very much focused in being responsive to the comments that HCD made. The, HCD's comments and the responses can really be broken up into three major buckets. One is really the technical revisions, that has to do with the suitable sites inventory, the constraints analysis, accessory dwelling units, we'll run through sort of each of these. The second big bucket is what's called affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH, and we'll run through kind of the conversations that we had with HCD about Santa Monica's fair housing approach, its influence on the rezoning and the programs in R1. And then finally, the third big bucket had to do with the city's commitments to public land, basically, the, the city-owned sites. That was a revisions to programs. So just a little walk down memory lane, in terms of, you know, why we're here, in terms of the mandates by housing element law. So, you know, as you know, Santa Monica has a arena allocation, regional housing needs allocation of 8,895 units, of which almost 70% have to be for low-income housing, and you can see the breakdown there in terms of the number of units, you know, of that 88, 95, it's, you know, over, slightly over 6,000 units have to be deed restricted as affordable. We demonstrate that zoned capacity, so that capacity to accommodate the arena through the suitable sites inventory, and the standards that are the basis of that suitable sites inventory, so the floor ratio and the height, it has to account for financial feasibility. So, you know, we can't establish standards that are not feasible for housing. Key housing element deadlines, so October 15, 2021, we all know and love that date, that was our statutory deadline to adopt a compliant housing element. It is HCD's position that the city had to have HCD certify the housing element before the council adopted it. That obviously didn't happen, given the speed of this process. There was a second deadline, if you will, of February 12, 2022, that was 120 days from that statutory deadline in October 2021, to adopt a compliant housing element and adopt having to revise, update your housing element every four years. We would note that that requirement actually changed to a rezoning requirement as of January 1 of this year, that's because of AB 1398. So instead of that penalty of updating every four years, the, the requirement is now to rezone for the arena by October 15, 2022, which is one year from the statutory deadline. So to be clear, we are actually out of compliance now, we were formally deemed out of compliance on February the 8th, 2022, and if we do not rezone by October 15, 2022, there are further consequences to that. So what are some of those consequences? In this moment right now, when Santa Monica is out of compliance on our housing element, you can see a couple of things that have to do with required approvals. So the city must approve any housing project with 20% onsite affordable units to lower-income households, or it's 100% moderate income project, even if the project exceeds zoning or loose maximums. That is where we are right now. No one has submitted such a project, but if they did, that would be the city's obligation in this moment when we are out of compliance. And you can see that the conditions that the city imposes cannot render the project infeasible. Secondly, and it's, this is a big one, is in terms of the city's eligibility for funding for affordable housing. Santa Monica has historically relied on the ability to access those funding sources, as have our affordable housing providers. In this moment, being out of compliance, we do not have access to those funding sources, and, you know, they do check in terms of, you know, the status of the city's compliance. As you heard me say, we're required to rezone by October 15, 2022, because we missed that February deadline, and then if that, if we miss that October 15, 2022 deadline for rezoning And then, um, if that, if we miss that October 15th, 2022 deadline for rezoning to accommodate our Rena, then there's a second trigger that the city must approve any project with at least 49% of the housing units affordable to very low, low and moderate income households, if it's listed on the SSI. And it beats the standards listed in the housing programs for rezoning. Um, our rezoning programs, I know, much more detailed, you know, than they were before. Um, and then further beyond that, you know, if we were just to ignore it, or, you know, not do that at all, this state can certainly, um, start enforcement proceedings, um, against the city, as we have seen, um, has happened in, in other jurisdictions. Um, in terms of what we would call the long-term consequences, so this is as the city reports, um, on, you know, progress, uh, towards, um, actually issuance of building permits for housing projects. Um, if we don't meet the sort of prorated Rena, you know, annually through our, our annual progress reports, um, you, uh, are subject to the, uh, requirements of SB 35. This is kind of an opt-in program, so in that situation, an applicant could opt in to use the streamlining provisions under SB 35. And you can see the conditions that have to be met there. There, there's a whole slew of preconditions, um, that, um, an applicant would have to meet. I won't go through all of them, but essentially they would have access, um, to that process under SB 35. And then just sort of an overarching, you know, part of this is the state can, um, also seek judicial relief and impose penalties and fines, um, that the city continues to be out of compliance. Um, so, you know, this is just a timeline of, of where we've been. Um, of course, the city council adopted the housing element in October of 2021. Pretty shortly after the city council adopted it, you know, the housing element was transmitted to HCD. But we also began work almost immediately with the planning commission, um, on, uh, a lot of the housing element implementation. So that's like the zoning changes, the amendments to the loose in the Bergamot area plan. Um, all of that work wasn't for naught. It actually really helped inform, um, some of the, uh, responses to comments to HCD, because we did do a lot of that analysis and work, um, in terms of zoning changes. So it helped kind of inform the policy changes that you see in the housing element now. Um, and then of course, uh, April 26th, we returned to the council with kind of a progress update on our consultations with, with HCD. And then the planning commission gave, um, uh, direction and recommendation, um, on, uh, the, uh, red lines that are before you tonight, um, on June the 15th. Um, so that's where we are right now, um, in terms of, uh, what next steps look like, you know, what we anticipate. Just kind of to talk about the schedule with you, um, tonight, if council, um, directs staff to transmit those red lines, um, in our perfect world, um, we would aim to submit those draft red line revisions, um, to HCD. Um, you know, by the end of this month, if there's not too many changes or early July, um, this would trigger then a 60-day review period, um, by HCD. And our goal is to, um, get from HCD what's called a draft in compliance letter that, um, you know, sounds, it means kind of what it sounds like, which is that your draft provisions are in compliance with housing element law. Um, and essentially what that looks like is, you know, you get that letter back, and it will give the city assurance, you know, that we can then proceed with working on zoning, um, you know, while, uh, the additional environmental analyses take place, uh, which is what we also discussed with you in, in April. Um, at this moment, we're not able to formally, um, adopt a revised housing element. Tonight is just a draft. But we wouldn't, we would be able to do that when we return to the council, which we anticipate is, is in September, to, um, return to adopt the revised housing element, um, and adoption of the, the EIR, which is the additional environmental analysis. So that's kind of, you know, what we're looking at as sort of an overarching schedule, should kind of everything go according to plan. Um, so let me jump now into just giving an overview of the revisions. Um, so remember that first bucket is those technical revisions. So, um, in terms of the suitable sites inventory, that is appendix F, um, of your red lines. And, um, the, the commentary here had to do with, um, a lot of, uh, clarification of data, repackaging data, um, sort of ground truthing a lot of the assumptions, um, that went into the suitable sites inventory, like how the city calculated our overall housing capacity, all of that stuff. So it's, it's pretty technical work. Um, we won't bore you with all the details, but there's a lot of maps and tables, lots of columns added to tables and what have you. And you'll see those all in red line form in appendix F. Two big things that came out of, um, HCD's comments on the suitable sites inventory that affected the kind of overall capacity. So that's the overall number of housing units that we're planning for, was that we had to take into account, um, a couple of things. One was the, um, the, uh, amount of, uh, pending projects that have occurred, that have been submitted since September. So we needed to account for that in our SSI. And then the second part was that, um, HCD's comments indicated that the city needed to account for the possibility of 100% commercial projects, um, occurring, um, on these SSI sites. So there was a 15% across-the-board reduction, um, in, uh, overall housing capacity in our SSI. Those two factors had the net effect of requiring the city to increase, you know, the number of units that we're studying, um, in these draft red line revisions, from 11,000 units of what we looked at in October to 13,000 units. So it's those two factors, you know, that were really the driving force behind, um, increasing the overall number of housing units that needed to be, um, studied. So that's kind of, you know, the, I would say, the, the biggest, you know, revision, um, in the SSI, um, in order to essentially make all of the calculations work. Um, the second area of the technical revisions was, um, what's called the constraints analysis. This is an analysis of, um, governmental and non-governmental constraints. So they want the city to analyze, you know, what are all the things that could potentially be a barrier to housing? Uh, many of the, uh, revisions here are really clarification in nature, kind of connecting the dots between, um, you know, things that we are doing in our programs to state law. So they run the gamut from emergency shelters to, uh, fees and exactions to permitting procedures. Um, so you can see sort of in summary, you know, what those changes are there. Um, I, I wouldn't say, you know, any of them are, are sub, you know, truly substantive in, in nature. Um, it was really a lot of clarification. Um, and then the third area of the technical revisions had to do with accessory dwelling units. Um, this was, uh, just, you know, really, um, going back to look at our permits, um, you know, taking a look at what was actually building permits issued. So that was just revising numbers, um, you know, going back to our permit system. When we, when we did this in, uh, last fall, 2021 hadn't ended yet, so we didn't have all those complete numbers. We were a, actually able to provide, um, how many permits were issued for calendar year 2021? It was about 120 permits, which was a lot more than we were actually, um, thinking. So that kind of surprised us. But, um, by, by having those numbers of, you know, how many building permits were issued for ADUs in the last five years, it allowed us to project forward, um, on what the city could commit to for additional, um, housing units in the R1 zone. So that was on average about 47 building permits a year, is what is, uh, a commitment now, um, in the, in the draft red lines. Um, the second big category of changes have to do with affirmatively furthering fair housing. We spent a substantial amount of time, um, uh, speaking with HCD staff, um, on AFFH, um, and really trying to walk them through, um, what's different with respect to Santa Monica's approach to fair housing. So, um, in terms of Santa Monica's approach, and it's, it's different than most other cities that we've seen, is that ours really leads, first and foremost, with housing preservation. Um, Santa Monica has a very long history of, um, tenant protections and housing assistance, fair housing enforcement. Um, we've always kind of led in this area. So you can see, um, a lot of revisions to the program background, um, in terms of highlighting Santa Monica's work in this area, and essentially committing to metrics and geographic targeting for each and every one of those programs, um, where it made sense. Um, and HCD went through every single program and provided feedback as to what changes are necessary to make those compliant with housing element law. Um, just want to highlight here in goal four, which is about increasing equitable housing access. There's two new programs, 4E and 4F. Program 4E, um, has to do with, um, SB 9, and 4F is a metrics and monitoring program. I'll go through those red lines, um, in a moment. Um, so you can see here, just like, you know, visually, um, we've heard kind of public comment throughout the process that, you know, this is the SSI map, um, and, you know, it looks like it's not a lot of sites, and it's just concentrated in different parts of the city. But the conversation that we had with HCD was, you know, this, this map doesn't tell the whole story. Um, you can see here, the areas, um, show where we are activating or permitting housing where it wasn't permitted before. So that's in the purple, and where we would incentivize housing throughout the city. So feasible standards are being established for housing throughout the city. And then, you know, this is really the other part of the story. This is what fills in all of the gaps, right? Where are those rent control units? There's a reason why we are not upzoning our multi-unit residential neighborhoods, why the city has, you know, really done a lot of work to protect those areas, because 97% of our rent control units are in our multi-unit residential zones. And that's a really, really, um, important part of the city's approach, um, to, to fair housing, is, uh, protecting the people, um, in those units, and, you know, making sure that Santa Monica residents who are displaced, you know, to the greatest extent possible, are able to, um, find a new home, um, within Santa Monica. Um, the other, uh, the, the, the second part of AFFH, you know, is that it influenced the distribution of housing capacity, um, throughout the city. And then the third part is that it informed programs for the R1 zones. So in terms of that second part, the distribution of housing capacity, this then leads us to, um, our conversation on FAR and height throughout the city. So where did the recommendations from FAR and height come from? Um, there were two factors that influenced it. One is feasibility, um, and that is based on a 15% inclusionary requirement. This is something that, um, was discussed throughout the housing element process, um, you know, as, as the change that would be made, um, to our affordable housing production program, our AHPP. Um, there's also other factors in terms of, uh, parking requirements. So, you know, that was something that's also, um, being adjusted as part of this. So the, these were some of the assumptions that went into the feasibility analyses, and then also ground floor flexibility. What that means is flexibility to have residential units on the ground floor, um, as opposed to, uh, requiring commercial space. You know, so that all sort of went into the, the, uh, calculations as to, you know, what, what are feasible FARs. Then, you know, you, you, you take those numbers, and then they sort of get fed through the AFFH lens of, you know, are we distributing housing, um, throughout the city? Isn't, you know, not over-concentrating in some areas and not others? Are areas that have historically not accommodated housing, you know, also, um, you know, having their fair share assigned, so to speak? So, um, the shift that you see from October is really more intensive housing potential north of the I-10 freeway, and with a focus really on those, um, transit boulevards like Woolshire and Santa Monica, Broadway and Colorado. Um, and less intensive housing potential for, um, the Pico neighborhood, for Main Street, for the, these neighborhood commercial areas on Ocean Park, um, and Montana. It's not that it's not feasible to do housing, it's just that those standards are less relative to other areas, um, in the city. And the highest potential continues to be downtown and in the Bergamot area. Um, so you take those two factors, and then the third step is, you know, that's, that's where the capacity from the SSI comes from. All those FARs and heights are the basis of the suitable sites inventory, and that is how the city demonstrates overall housing capacity, um, to accommodate the Rena. So you can see the difference in October 2021, we planned for 11,000 units. But remember, those two factors, you know, that, that essentially caused the increase in the overall capacity was because we lost, um, sites to pending projects. So we lost land to assign units to, right? And then secondly, there was the across-the-board reduction to account for commercial, um, capacity. So what that led to was an overall increase in the number of units to make up for that loss. And so you can see now, we're planning for somewhere in the ballpark of about 13,000 units instead. Um, so this is just showing the evolution of the height in FAR. So this compares what council approved in October to where we are now with the current recommendation. The green and the red boxes, green represents where, um, FARs have increased, and the red, uh, represents where FARs have, uh, decreased. You can see here, this represents an overall capacity of about 13,600 units. This is an overall buffer of, uh, 53%. Um, we've heard questions about, you know, why does the buffer need to be that large? Um, the reason for that is because, um, every, we, we've learned since October, when we had to redo this exercise again, just the submittal of some pending housing projects brought us actually below, um, our, uh, uh, our, um, required capacity to accommodate the Rena. Um, so, you know, lesson learned, it's really important to keep a healthy buffer, because the city is required to show, um, throughout the entire eight-year cycle, and it's, it's what's called no net loss. You have to show that you have the capacity to accommodate the Rena at every moment over the eight-year cycle. So that if you go below, right, then you have to rezone to make up for that loss. And, you know, unless we want to be back here rezoning every few months, you know, when someone submits a new project, um, you know, it's important to plan for the buffer. And so, so that's why what's before you, um, you know, has, uh, an, a, a, a buffer of 53%. The lower income buffer, you can see there, is 60%. Uh, the moderate income one I pointed out, because that one is actually really important. Um, you have to demonstrate, um, you know, that you have capacity across all of the income levels. And moderate income is the one that's the hardest, um, to, to come by. And that one is kind of on a razor-thin edge, you know? So, um, every time we, we sort of, um, adjust the numbers, we always keep an eye on that moderate income buffer. Um, you know, cause if it falls below capacity, you know, then we need to increase the FARs and make that up again. Um, you can see here, uh, other zones, um, in the city that have gone down. Um, this is consistent with the overall strategy that we just talked about. And it's a little, probably a little easier to visualize on a map. The dark blue here represents, um, areas that have the highest, that are being proposed as having the highest intensity. And the lighter colors are the ones that have the lowest intensity. So you can see there, um, on, uh, Pico and the neighborhood commercial areas, um, are where the capacity is proposed to be the lowest in this rezoning. And then it's really very much concentrated in the areas north of the freeway, um, you know, as, as having the, the highest, um, housing potential in the city. You can see here in Bergamot has the highest, um, you know, i- in addition to downtown. Um, so in the Bergamot Transit Village and the mixed-use creative zones, um, 4.0, um, sort of in that spine that runs on either side of Olympic. Um, and it sort of, um, transitions down to 3.25 on either side, where it transitions to those residential areas. Um, you can see here in downtown, not, we, we didn't propose to change, you know, what you saw in October, um, for downtown. So that would continue to be 2.75 and 60 feet as the base tier one. Um, downtown is the one area where the tier system is remaining, cause we're not permitted to downzone or eliminate, um, those, those standards. Um, so you can see there for downtown. The only change here was, um, the addition of a tier three, um, to the neighborhood village zone, which is Fifth, Sixth and Seventh Street, which would, um, sort of have it aligned with the transit adjacent. And that is this area. There you go. Poking anyone in the eye, I hope. Oh, there we go, yeah. So that's the transit adjacent area there. That's, you know, 4.084 feet, and that would extend over here. Again, tier three, um, that's a local incentive program. Um, it means someone could, you know, choose to opt into it, but they could also opt to just do, um, the tier one project with a state density bonus. So, um, those are some maps, and we, we can certainly come back to those if, if they're helpful for you. Um, moving on now to the third, um, part of the AFFH, uh, category, and that has to do with the art, its influence on the R1 zones. So we were able to, um, clarify with HCD through the discussions that there was not a requirement, um, to rezone, um, R1. Um, you know, that would only have come about if they were looking for a metric of deed-restricted units, um, in the R1 zone. Um, and we got clarification that what they're looking for is really just overall increase in capacity. So that's, um, where programs 4E and F are, 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 um, structured towards. 4E, um, really builds off of the study session we held with council on SB 9, where generally we heard, um, you know, a favor towards, um, incentivizing these combination SB 9 and ADU projects on some of the larger parcels in the city that were best able to sustain it. Um, during that meeting, 10,000 square feet was, um, discussed as a threshold. You know, so that's, that's in the program. Um, program 4F is also a brand-new program, um, and that establishes the metric, that, that, for, those 47 building permits, permits per year, um, in the R1 zones for additional housing units that I talked about. And then there's also a commitment here to do, uh, what's, they're calling kind of like a mid-cycle check-in. Um, so in December 31st, 2025, the targets are not being met, adjust menu strategies as necessary, um, and appropriate, um, within one year. So that kind of, um, follows, uh, what language we've seen in other certified, um, housing elements. Um, and then finally, the third category, um, of changes, um, had to do with city-owned sites. So HCD's comment here was that they were requiring a commitment, um, that city-owned sites can accommodate the 1,880 units. So they were really looking for a timing component, greater commitment and relationship, um, to the list of, uh, city-owned sites, and, uh, you know, ensuring that, um, essentially that the city intends to proceed to, to issue those RFPs. So you can see here, this is just a table of the five city-owned sites, um, that are listed in the housing element, and, you know, what we've reported as the minimum unit capacity on each of those, that, that, you know, we would need to, um, offer up, um, as part of, of any RFPs, and also listing the constraints, um, that are associated with, um, any of those. Um, so the city-owned sites actually pay, play a very important role, um, with one, an aspect of the housing element, and it's, you know, called the, the, the shortfall, or the lower-income shortfall. What that means, um, in sort of simple terms, is that it's the difference between the Rena, the lower-income Rena, and the lower-income, uh, capacity based on existing zoning. So that difference is called the lower-income shortfall. And that is calculated at approximately 1,100 units. Um, so the city-owned sites, um, would cover, fo- fully cover that shortfall. We've discussed this strategy of having, you know, only the city-owned sites address that shortfall. Um, and HCD was, um, you know, gave, gave positive feedback, um, to that approach. The reason that it is focused on city-owned sites is because, in order to address the lower-income shortfall, um, the site that you choose, they must allow 100% residential use, and then they also must require that, uh, residential use occupies at least 50% of the floor area of the project. That's a little more problematic to accomplish on private property across an entire zone, um, versus public land. So that's, um, why the focus was on the city-owned sites. Um, if there was, through this process, a city-owned site, you know, was removed for some reason, you know, that would, there would be a, a shortfall in the lower-income capacity that we would have to make up. So we would either have to identify and. So we would either have to identify another site or make up for the loss in some other way. You can see here, I know this is hard to read, but this is in your red lines. It's program 2E, this is the full red line in terms of the changes that were made. And I can just, you know, kind of go through conceptually that it mentions that we have to accommodate at least, oh, there's a typo there. It should be 1,880 units. And that the city issuing an RFP by June 30, 2023, 2025 and 2027. So basically every other year and then accounting for those constraints on the city-owned sites. And then, you know, it's a reference again to figure F6, which is the list of city-owned sites. And then they were looking for us to list here, like, what is the typical process, you know, that the city undertakes for putting up city-owned sites through an RFP? Unfortunately, the city does have quite a bit of experience with offering public land for 100% affordable housing. And then we also listed here, you know, some of the tools that the city has used in the past to facilitate affordable housing, including appropriate zoning processes, reduce our free ground rent, providing funding through our own local housing trust fund dollars. And then the Planning Commission added actually the fourth bullet to this, which is supporting applications for other funding sources for affordable housing. So that was really something that the city already does as well. So that was the gist of the changes to the city-owned sites. Again, you know, that stronger commitment to timing and the sites and the minimum number of units that would be pursued. So that's an overview of, you know, kind of the, all the, the three categories of changes. We did want to note here that we were working super fast. So there are some inadvertent omissions and errors in the, in the red lines. You have non-substantive in nature. You can see just some typos. Program 1D, the timeframe should be October 15, 2022. Programs 1F and 1J, it should say minimum FAR and height, as shown in the table. Program 1F, we forgot to add in unit mix is one of the areas that would be reviewed as part of the standards review in that program. 1J, that will, should be a shall in that sentence. And then here, program 4E, this was actually a Planning Commission recommendation on the SB9 program, deleting that sentence about requiring SB9 units to be rented or sold. That doesn't change at all the, the program. It just provides, I think, flexibility for that discussion to continue. Program 6A, the program background inadvertently did not include data around voucher distribution, the 90405 area code. So that will be added in. In terms of the summary of housing programs, there was a typo in there about a timeframe for program 4A. And then in chapter four, there were minor numerical adjustments that had to be made due to calculations from the approved and pending projects in the SSI. So that affects, you can see the page numbers there in the sections. It's all of the calculations in there and it's sort of plus or minus like 20 or 30 units either way as the calculations came out. So again, sort of these minor revisions. So that brings us to the end of our staff report. We'd be happy to answer your questions.
Sorry, let me, I wanted to find out, so. Thank you very much for the staff report. Very helpful. So I see right now only one person on our, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so council, would you rather, would you like to hear from the public speaker before we move on to questions? Good, Ms. Barton, would you like to step up, please?
Hold on a second, Ms. Barton. It's the, if you stop, I can, I can pull it up for you. There it is.
Good evening. Please allow me to begin at the end of my presentation since the Planning Commission didn't allow me to finish my sentence, since it applies to chapter three, policy 7.2 and others. The point I was making was about how the city pays legal aid yearly operating budget. Therefore, ultimately, the city has control over who they help and how. And I'm speaking from experience, leaving affordable housing tenants, especially seniors and the disabled tenants, defend for themselves and/or be forced to live with the conditions or move. Or would that be the real purpose of the no reasonable accommodations, discrimination and harassment the city practices? To turn over affordable housing units? Citing chapter three, policy 6.5 pertaining to reasonable accommodation. What's up on the screen is a perfect example. Y'all remember David White's made-for-TV concern about the light, right? With his accomplice, David Martin, at the June 14, 2022 city council meeting? Well, this is what the city allowed NRDC to do. Put up a partition which further restricts the airflow in my unit. So you can see the glare from the light is just filtered in a different way. In addition, the other issue of the reason of the building reducing airflow to only the affordable housing units, but with this action, it's specifically my unit that's limited, made worse. Showing the city would rather practice discrimination and harassment against a disabled, affordable housing tenant than enforce municipal code, which speaks volumes on the city's position on fair housing, besides the disabled being at the bottom of your low priority list again. Making it just look like you're trying to make the state happy and just go back to the city's normal practices as the city has done before. Thank you.
Do you, do you mind if I ask what exactly we're looking at here? Can you, I don't.
Look, you're looking at, this is the partition that's put up between the NRDC building and my, my.
Silver part, the silverish-looking thing?
Yes, yes. And it's not 50%, it's not 50% transparent either. So it goes against municipal code in that, in that way as well. So I, like I said, I can only feel that the city is allowing this to happen to once again retaliate against me for speaking at public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Now, I think, I see that there's no one from the Housing Commission here to address us tonight. So I think we should read their comments, which are part of the record. And we received recommendations from them. But since they are our Housing Commission, we probably ought to do it. So I will read those into the record. And that is, please find the recommendations passed by the Housing Commission on 61622. They aren't numbered or anything. They're three points. One, ensure affordable housing is not just a paper exercise and obtain revenue sources to make affordable housing a reality, inclusive of increased efficiency in the current budgetary process and more robust resources for affordable housing. Two, prioritize affordable housing historically blue and green-lined neighborhoods. Three, inaction has contributed to the segregation that exists. And the city should take meaningful action to physically redistribute affordable housing equitably across the city. Steps are long overdue. There are no neutral actions and the city cannot fail to act. So that is what our Housing Commission has charged us with. And so does any council member want to begin? Do you have any questions? Councilmember Brock.
Sure, I want to, and I know I've asked some of these questions in meetings with you. However, I'd like to make sure they're clarified for the public. If we went to, let's say we put a microscope on Main Street, Nielsen Way, and the changes there. The publicly-owned land on Nielsen, which we commonly look at as strip parking lots behind Main Street. What is the potential maximum height limit that we're looking at for there on our publicly-owned land, which would be 100% affordable housing?
Yeah, so for that, because it's city-owned land, it would be subject to a full public process, of which the council would be involved. The assumption was 150 units per acre. And that was derived from existing affordable housing projects that have been built, generally around like five, like five to six stories. Is that right? Yeah.
So approximately six, five to seven?
No, I would say five to six.
Five to six would be the maximum for that land.
Yeah, there's just construction costs.
And that's the land that faces Nielsen. If we look at the other side of the alley, tell me about the maximum heights with density bonuses on the private land on Main Street.
So for that, what's proposed on Main Street is 55 feet. So that is probably around five stories. Yeah, five stories.
Plus density bonuses?
Yes.
Would that be above the five or is that five maximum?
No, no, density bonus is in addition to maximum.
A density bonus could be an extra two stories?
I, I can't put a number to it because it's case by case as proposed by the applicant in order to.
Has, has a norm?
There really isn't one.
Well, could it be more than two stories above?
In theory, it could be if, if they could demonstrate that it's needed to offset the cost of the affordable units. I would say typically what we've seen in just recent ones have been one to two stories, I think.
Okay, and this would be from Pico Boulevard south to Marine on Main Street?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Can we go to, let's shift gears and let's look at, let's say, Wilshire Boulevard. Tell me the same questions really for Wilshire. I just want to make sure that residents aren't surprised later and residents understand what's coming. And then I'll ask you, is there any way to allay any of this? And I know what your answer will be, but I'm going to ask you that too. So for Wilshire Boulevard, tell me the zoning and tell me, because I think residents are not all familiar with floor area ratio. I think they're going to be more interested in what's the height? What's the density of a project? So, and knowing that, I asked this earlier, that, for instance, Vons and Bristol Farms may have a different zoning on some of the parking lots than they would be on the main buildings.
Yeah, so for Wilshire Boulevard, that's what's called the MUB zone, mixed-use Boulevard. And it's one zone for that whole Boulevard. That's 3.25 FAR and 70 feet. 70 feet translates to roughly about six stories. And that would be the same for Santa Monica Boulevard, Colorado and Broadway.
And those would be still subject, if the affordable housing mix was there, to state-authorized density bonuses?
State, state density bonus is, could be requested on top of any of these.
And if these projects are, if these projects are submitted with their papers in order, right, all their documents are in order, then that would be not subject to Planning Commission or city council review. It would be planning department review. Am I correct?
Right, they, they need to be code-compliant. So they would need to, it's not, it's not our discretion at all. It's about compliance with the municipal code.
Let's, let's hit two more just for the hell of it. Montana Avenue and maybe Ocean Park Boulevard.
So Montana Avenue is primarily an NC zone, neighborhood commercial zone. So that's 2.5 and 55 feet. That's also roughly five stories. Ocean Park Boulevard, I assume you mean kind of the area around 16th Street.
Yeah, 16th, 17th or 16th back toward the ocean.
Yeah, so that is, that is also the NC zone, 2.5 and 55 feet. So also roughly around five stories. The north side of Ocean Park Boulevard, kind of like east of Clover Park, is also the same like NC zone.
So those one-story buildings there could be combined, torn down and redeveloped on both the north and south sides of the street?
I don't think we.
Because the south side, I think, is Boston Properties and they're already a major landowner over there.
Yeah, the south side is a different zone. That's the office campus zone. And you can see what's proposed there is the 2.75 and 60 feet, which is also approximately about five stories for 60 feet.
So when we're looking at all that, that will primarily, if there's housing in those projects, it'll be inclusionary housing?
Right. They would need to comply with the city's inclusion.
Right, which is kind of opposed to what we on the council dais, I think, were asking for. We were just asking for more 100% affordable projects. But there's probably no way to get that other than our city land.
Well, no, I mean, we have 100% affordable projects that are built throughout the city, not on city land, but keep in mind.
Do you anticipate we might be able to get more of those?
Well, I mean, that's, that's subject to funding. You know, they, they compete for purchasing land in the market with every other housing developer, you know? So that depends on their ability to compete. There is a program in the housing element that's called the Right of First Offer Ordinance. And it's the intent to pursue a program that would make nonprofit housing providers more competitive in the land-buying market. It is a very complex program to create and administer. But that is, the idea is to try and give a leg up to them in the land-buying market. But, you know, we don't necessarily have the funds to, you know, facilitate that like some other cities.
If we are looking at this from a resident standpoint, then they should anticipate by 2030, there would be significantly more density and sort of a reframed Santa Monica, correct?
You're saying in theory or in reality?
Either.
I mean.
Theory and reality.
It's, it's hard for me to.
It just, it probably just depends on the matter of degrees of how much construction is actually completed by that.
Yeah, I mean, it's true because we, you know, this, this is, those are things are somewhat out of the city's control. You know, the city does not, we don't build housing. We don't purchase land. We don't, you know? So that would be very speculative, you know, on my part. The city's role in this is really just a regulatory, you know, aspect of it. I don't think I could predict, you know, how many, I mean, past trends are not an indicator of, you know.
And I know you put up a slide that said, here are the penalties if we don't conform. And, and in fact, you're going back to that slide. Very good, before I could ask. And so there are consequences. Some of the consequences could be severe or are these all theoretical? We don't know if the state will really follow through long-term. What's your, what's your anticipation?
These are real. These are real. This is, this is what you see on the screen is this is in state law now. And, you know, we've certainly seen examples throughout the state of where HCD's Housing Accountability Unit, you know, has pursued enforcement action with, with cities that have not acted on their housing element or acted in violation, you know, of their adopted housing elements. So I don't think we have any reason to believe that this is not something that the state intends to pursue.
Do you see any movement within other cities, sorry, within other cities in the state who have pledged to fight the housing, the HCD allocations? Have you, you haven't seen anyone be successful yet?
I'm aware of some actions going on. I have to be honest, we've been pretty busy and we haven't followed it super closely. But I'm not aware of one that has been successful. I think we would have heard about it. I don't know what the city attorney's office.
Was, is there?
I just gave, there was a case that came down today about how, about RINA allocations. And once again, the city lost, I mean, badly. It was a Coronado case and against Sandag. And the court ruled that basically they couldn't change the RINA allocation. But the city attorney, I just sent it, I haven't read, I have to be honest. I saw that it happened. I sent it to the city attorney just like a minute ago. I don't think any, you know, these cases are long. No one's digested it. But you can see that the ruling is not good for us.
Okay, and.
The RINA numbers aren't even subject to review by the courts.
Can you repeat that?
That the RINA numbers are not even subject to review by the courts.
Okay. Because that's of prime concern to residents who have emailed, called, begged us to fight this allocation, regardless of the affordable housing component, just the overall component. I don't see as much argument about the 1,880 units and some of the other parts. I see constant complaints about, from residents saying, why aren't you guys fighting? And so what I, what I'm hearing up here from the mayor, from people all around the state, I know there are a couple of small lawsuits. But I haven't heard any indications that any of these would be successful. But, so that's, that's why I'm asking that because I have residents who are saying. But, so that's, that's why I'm asking that, because I have residents who are saying, why aren't you guys fighting? Why have you just laid down and done nothing? And it, my question is, which was, I think, uh, council member Davis has said, count, uh, Mayor Himmelrich have both said that if we fought, then uh H C D might uh not be as nice as they are. We're not saying they're being nice now, but that it might, uh, it might, they might decide to turn up the pressure on us rather than say, you know, Santa Monica was, were great players for so many years, that maybe we should cut them a break. You haven't heard anything that says anybody's going to be cut a break?
Yeah, we, we've not, we've not seen any of that. You know, our, our consultations with H C D staff, I think, you know, they've been, been helpful certainly in clarifying, you know, what was meant by, by these comments, um, you know, per council's direction. You know, we have been um working with um our lobbyists and the delegation to pursue sort of like, you know, legislative advocacy. You know, but this is also, you know, we have to also look out for the city's interests, um, you know, in this, in ensuring, you know, council's direction to continue to pursue a compliant housing element, so sort of, you know, running on different tracks.
One last question, um, other comments I received from um different neighborhood groups, et cetera, were about the eleven thousand versus thirteen thousand. Now, I know you explained that earlier, but um to residents, I think they would feel better if we were still at eleven thousand versus upping the ante before we had to. So I think my question is, uh, can we stay at eleven? And then up the ante if we believe that we're going to fall short? Because I think you said, I may be wrong, but I thought you said a few minutes ago that we could go back and adjust our housing element at any time. Are, do you believe that they would not approve our housing element at a maximum of eleven thousand units? That we would have to have thirteen thousand in order to get approval? Or is that something that we're just doing because we think it helps?
No, this is, this is in order, again, to meet our capacity, so we'll go back to. So this, the, this slide here, that you saw this in April, but this is just a diagram kind of explaining, you know, why did the overall capacity increase? So again, it's those two factors. You know, we lost parcels, we lost land to assign units to. And the number of units increased because we lost land from, from S S I sites converting from theoretical capacity to actual.
To reality?
To reality, right? And there were fewer affordable units in those real projects relative to what was assumed in the theoretical capacity. So when you lost that affordable capacity, it had to be made up um across, you know, whatever was remaining in land. And you know, where you have less land, the capacity has to go up, the F A Rs went up. Um, the other factors you can see there was the reduction um across the board, the fifteen percent reduction that H C D, that you just have to reduce your overall capacity by fifteen percent. You can't take credit for that, so we had to, again, make up what was lost in the lower income capacity. That, that is the issue, it's not the overall big number. It's the um, the divi, you know, the, the different categories for very low and low and moderate income that you have to show, you know, in terms of meeting your Rena. So um, that's the explanation of why it's overall capacity gone up. And then going back again, you know, to the, to the factors you can see here, you know, the, the, it has to be feasible, we have A F F H, and then you can see, you know, we did look at eleven thousand units um in October. You know, I've explained, you know, we, we're now looking at thirteen thousand because of those two factors of the pending sites and then the fifteen percent across the board.
But if things went well, we wouldn't have to get there.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if in our reporting, we're like, oh, you know, surprisingly, we're actually meeting, we're issuing building permits, because what they care about is building permits, not just approved. We actually have to get to building permit issuance. And if that's going well, um, there is certainly nothing to prevent the city from uh amending the housing element at a future time. It would, it would be subject to the same process, you'd have to, you know, submit it to H C D, right? Prove that it is compliant with housing element law, so that certainly is a avenue, you know, that, that can happen.
So I, may I?
I'll yield for now, I may have a couple of follow-up questions later.
Well, well, so I, I just want to talk about what you just said, I mean, it, this is an ongoing process. It's not like we get to the number and then we say, okay, we quit. I mean, and, and it's not, it's going to get worse, it's not going to get better, I suspect, right? I mean, unless something groundbreaking happens, but my point is simply that, you know, look, I think, uh, I too was disturbed by the thirteen thousand units, this buffer drives me crazy. Jim will tell you, right, I don't like it. But um, but it is a capacity description and not really a unit description, if you know what I mean. It's what we could do. Now, does the fact that we could do it mean it's going to happen? We're in a recession, we've been through the same four, I've been through. Look, I've been through four of them, right? Phil's been through four, I know, because we're the same age, right? So we've lived through this, I mean, it's not like we're going to see a lot of cranes around Santa Monica for the next three years, assuming that the finances pan out the way I expect they will, but you know, who knows? But our requirement is to plan for it, not to make it happen. And we can plan for it, but there, we have no control over the economy.
And, and the state still, just to clarify, the state of California is still not providing any funding for any of this.
You mean out of their fifty billion dollar reserve?
Hundred, hundred billion. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's a remarkable fact, that this is completely, still remains a completely unfunded mandate by the state of California, which is absolutely arbitrary, absolutely unfair to Santa Monica.
Okay, who goes next? Councilmember Davis? Well, you had your hand up.
Sure, yeah, no, I mean, other people want to ask questions first, because mine will obviously come from a little different perspective, so I don't know if people.
Well, okay, so questions, okay, so coun- uh, councilmember Negretti and then Mayor Protem McCallum, and then councilmember De La Torre, and then councilmember Par.
Okay, and then I'll.
And then you get to go.
Okay, good.
And you can do the whole enchilada.
Councilmember Brock covered pretty much everything, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. And in your, and just to dovetail off of what was just said about the eleven thousand, thirteen thousand, because it took um a lot for me to understand that as well. Does that buffer protect us from potential height, or are you just buffering yourself? I mean, because you were talking about then you have to get denser, so does that buffer protect us by?
It, it protects the city from having to, uh, going through a rezoning process every few months. You know, every time a new application or several applications are filed and we find ourselves falling below our Rena allocation. It means that we need to, un, un, under housing element law, you need to rezone within, I believe it's six months, you know, when you've discovered that deficiency. So we don't want to be in a process of repeatedly having this conversation about where else can we find, you know, more, more capacity? It is a lot more sane to do this um in the beginning. Um, and, and like I said, you know, we've, we've definitely learned a lot um in the September to now timeline, you know, when thirteen housing projects were submitted and, you know, took all that land capacity off the list and where that landed in the S S I with a twenty-four percent buffer. You know, so we're trying to do this over eight years. You know, we want to have um a healthy buffer, because it's, again, it's not just the overall buffer, it's the lower income. It's the lower income capacity that is going to be the tough thing to maintain.
Right, well, that's the problem, because people and I, the, the projects might not build out to the maximum and we can't not approve it because of that, because we have to accept it, because it meets the bare minimum.
Yes.
So I think that's the thing to understand, is that there was projects that we hope people will build and put as many affordable units, but that doesn't always happen, so therefore we have to make other space available.
It's choices, you, you could have a higher inclusionary requirement, but that also means higher F A Rs, right?
Right.
So that's the trade-off.
It's catch twenty-two. And the density bonuses, right? Um, you were talking about height on Main Street and specifically the parking lots. And you were saying that you were sort of guestimating five or six, but there, what is the max height?
Well, I guess like under the code, they're actually currently zoned, is it O P two or R two? R two, right? R three, oh, okay, R three, so they're actually currently zoned R three, they're like residentially zoned.
The parking lots behind, on?
Yep, on, on Main Street, and I know that sounds kind of funny, but. And the maximum height, sorry, let me just bring that up. Currently.
I can see it from here clearly.
It would be two stories. So, you know, currently, if, if, if a project came in a hundred percent affordable, they could, under, with state density bonus law, which we can't account for in our S S I, but they could ask for an additional three stories on top of that.
Right, so what would be the maximum height? Well, you said five to six earlier, seven.
Yeah, well, well, the, the reason I said that is because it's a city-owned site.
Right.
And um the city has full control to sort of allow what's necessary, you know, to make the hundred percent affordable housing work.
I totally get that, so what would be the best case scenario if someone had a hundred percent affordable? What's the tallest they could go, seven stories? Is there?
Well, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking more from a practical perspective, from what we've seen in terms of a hundred percent affordable housing is really five, probably not more than six stories, because it does become cost prohibitive when it changes construction type. And so when, when we talked to all the housing providers, they said, we would never do a seven or eight story building, it's just not feasible for them.
They wouldn't because it's not feasible, but you could, if you could make it feasible.
No, because the building method, they won't, because you go from wood construction to steel construction, it's too expensive.
I guess what I'm saying, because it is a city-owned site in theory, like in a future process, the council, if, if someone said, hey, I could do an eight-story hundred percent affordable, then I assume the council would say yes.
Got it.
We would allow that to.
And then it's, I know that parking would then have to be, it says it would have to be moved somewhere else, right? For those businesses that are on Main Street, the parking.
Talking about the Main Street lots?
Yeah.
So we did list in there as a constraint, it is in the coastal zone.
Right.
That, you know, it's assumed the parking would probably have to be replaced. I don't imagine it just, it would, you know, just a, as part of that coastal process. Again, we're not, we're not talking specifically or planning for that right now, but that, we had to list that, because it's in the coastal zone, it's just what we know at this moment.
And then we generate income from those parking lots, right?
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they're paid parking lots, so.
So when, so when, if a project were to become available, to, if a project were to take over some of those parking lots, I guess, what happens to, to that revenue and do the parking lots? I know you're saying it's based on coastal zone and there's an assumption, but then what's the next step? Do we plan for creating additional parking for the beach or?
Well, it would, um, you know, I, I think one would expect that it would be replaced on site. You know, I don't know what the mechanism for that would be, it's a lot of parking.
Yeah, especially since there's residents already that.
Right, yeah, I mean, I would imagine that if the city wanted, you know, if it came to, you know, that, that parking wouldn't be required to be replaced, if that was one of the objectives and, you know, again, this is part of a future process, so I'm totally speculating. Not sure even how it would be funded, you know, yet, but, you know, if, if, if that was the, the, the case, you know, that, that, that would just be part of the deal points, I guess, you know, of that, of, of, of that partnership.
Because we talk about access to the beach a lot, right? And that's what, because, and when families come.
It's a coastal commission's chart, that's looking at purely from their perspective in terms of public access to the coast. From the city's perspective, you know, there may be obviously reasons in terms of supporting businesses, you know, on Main Street that, you know, those parking lots are for, so there's a lot of interest, you know, in that parking, which is why it's listed, you know, in the, in the table.
And I think, but that's sort of a concern, because we don't look at these, and I, I realize that we're in this position where we don't have a lot of time to digest, I mean, you are, you've gone to school for this, this is what you do. You know, I imagine you've been working in this field for a long time, I haven't. Um, and trying to digest all this information without visually like a modular three D view of what the city could potentially look like in eight years. I hear that, listen, um, if we don't do this, there's a lot of ramifications and we have to pass this through. But it's, I know we're talking about ifs, ands, and buts, and it doesn't mean, when we put this out there, the residents hear, this is what's going to happen in eight years, and I realize that that's not the case. But it is opening it up, and then when we say we're not thinking about what would happen to, I'm just thinking about those parking lots, how full they get and traffic, if you were building something and now we have to put public and residential parking there. When, what happens when those projects come to us and when we're forced to push them through in a certain timeline to make them happen?
Right, so, so the timeline in the housing element isn't about issuing the building permit, it's just in terms of issuing the R F P to offer that site, um, up to find a developer partner for affordable housing.
Okay.
The council would be fully involved in establishing the objectives, you know, for, for that site. And, you know, we can, I think we can talk about that in future meetings as to what the best approach is and, you know, what, what the council wants to accomplish with these, um, with these city-owned sites, because it could be, it could run the range from a very simple and straightforward, um, you know, sort of group approach, you know, or sort of case by case, and, you know, we, I think that would probably be best talked about at probably a different.
So for tonight, what we're pushing through is what's here for zoning, I get that. But then, that opens up the opportunity for these projects to be built, and you're saying, but then those are future discussions. So nothing is talking about the timeline in which something has to be built?
No, no, yeah, you're just, you're just demonstrating that.
You're making it available.
The possibility of it happening, yeah.
But all the other things taken into account, because what the community is saying all the time is, we can't build all this, we don't have the infrastructure, the water, the streets, all these things.
I mean, what, I mean, it, you know, what it takes to bring a project to market, like if it's not on city-owned sites, right? That, that relies solely on the private market, you know, to have the capital necessary to purchase the land, to find the financing, go through the process of, you know, approvals and permits and, you know, actually build it. You know, so, you know, th- those are things that are fully out of our control. You know, like I said, that the city doesn't build housing, we certainly don't do it on private property. We're just establishing the conditions under which it could happen.
But if a project were to come to city council, I'm just making this clear for residents who've, who've are fearful of the impact it's going to have on the city, that we're going to just have projects being built and we're not going to be looking at traffic as we would any project. But what you're saying is that's not the case, when, as a project comes up, it's going to be brought before the council and all of the same requirements where we look at traffic and.
On city, I'm talking specifically about city-owned sites. For private property, no. Like the process we have now, you know, individual projects are not for, brought forward to the city council. What's proposed in the housing element is a continuation of the process we have now, which is an administrative process for housing projects that meet code, they, they have to be code compliant. They, if, if they do not meet code, then they would not qualify um for that process. So, you know, if they comply with the rules um in the municipal code, then they would be eligible for that administrative process.
You're talking about the buy right projects?
Right, right.
But on the parking lots like we're talking about, that's different.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a different, tho- those are city-owned sites, those would be subject to, that's, that's public land, it would be in front of the council, you know, in terms of the issuance on R F P, the council would be fully involved.
But on private, they would not have to assess traffic needs and other things?
No, I mean, that's, that, that's already been assessed through the housing element E I R. Like, you know, that's why we do sort of these, what's called a program level environmental impact analysis. And, you know, analyzing traffic has evolved a lot over the years. You know, it's not, basically, the, the E I R looks at all of the, or it discloses, you know, the potential impacts of planning for all of this housing. So that's, you know, that environmental analysis has been done already. And in order to account for this, you know, increase to thirteen thousand units, this extra two thousand units, we're doing additional environmental analyses, which will be brought to the council in September.
But we have to approve this before we do that, and I remember in past meetings, basically, that the state doesn't, isn't concerned with our environmental impact report.
Yeah, that, well, that's, I mean, that's, we're, we're required to undertake that analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, so it's a disclosure. Um, and that analysis has been done, it was done before the October action and it will be done before the council takes any formal action, you know, on adopting a draft.
And then, but the city's asking us to accept the rezoning to prepare for this, but that's all they're focused on. Not the water, the o- other impacts that it has on the city, that's not of concern, it's just to make this, to make this a possibility. And if we don't, there's serious ramifications, fines and whatnot.
Right, I mean, I wouldn't say it's like not of concern, you know, it's, 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 the, the, the impacts of planning for this amount of housing, this is, this is more housing than we analyzed in the loose, you know, which was somewhere in the ballpark of four thousand-ish units. And even with the D C P, we redid it again. And, you know, it was increased to about six or, it's six or eight thousand units. So this is, you know, more than, almost double, you know, what we anticipated before. So, um, you know, all of those impacts have been disclosed um in the E I R and um, you know, it will be brought back again to the council in September. This, this tonight, you know, you're not formally adopting something per se, this, these are just draft red line revisions, we're really. This, these are just draft red line revisions. We're really requesting council's permission to transmit this to HGD. We wouldn't do that on our own. You know, we want to make sure that the council has seen it, you know, you endorse the red lines, and we can proceed forward in this process, you know, in trying to get to a compliant housing element. This is like a, a little mid-step.
One of the eight hundred steps?
Yeah.
I'm, I just wanted to say thank you because you spend so much time with everybody and everybody's questions before and during and after. So I just wanted to end with that and hand it over.
No problem. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, yes, okay. Thank you for keeping track.
So I just have a, an initial question. The total affordable units is about sixty-six hundred in this next arena. Eighteen hundred and eighty of which we're proposing could or, or would, for the purposes of this proposal, would be done on city-owned sites. And presumably the other four thousand would be through these other programs throughout the city. But the only one that like we really have control over would be these city-owned sites. And so my concern is just that, and I love the Bergamot project, and I love the idea of doing something with Bergamot down the road. But I am deeply concerned when, sort of as we're going into this conversation about affirmatively furthering fair housing and all these efforts we're going to make to diversify affordable housing in Santa Monica, that the largest chunk of that eight hundred and, eighteen hundred and eighty is right in what most of us still refer to as the Pico neighborhood. I mean, that's still our neighborhood. And I'm, I, I am not necessarily opposed to building more affordable housing in the Pico neighborhood outright. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but it's kind of like we're contradicting ourselves in some ways because we called it out as a Bergamot project and like removed it from the larger conversation of the Pico neighborhood. Because we're saying on the one hand, we're not going to upzone this because it's already, you know, we're not going to allow this here because it's already had so much. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand why we didn't do more in areas that would have caused the community more discomfort, like upzoning R1 more aggressively to meet the need. Or, and, and we said, we'll put the largest chunk of what we likely will be able to do in the same neighborhood that we've seen is truly suffering as a result of COVID, because you have some of, you have the majority, I think, and I'm maybe misquoting this, of the most affordable rent-controlled housing in the Pico neighborhood. You have the lowest-income residents in the city of Santa Monica in the Pico neighborhood, which abuts Bergamot, because Bergamot is literally built where the old factory was that the majority of the Pico neighborhood worked in. And now we're going to put, we're telling the state that the largest concentration of lower-income targets are going to be on the Bergamot site. And we have a community that's suffering right now. We have mental health issues, we have poverty. We have a lot going on in the Pico neighborhood right now because of a, an already large concentration of people who need significantly more wraparound services that we are not providing. So this document, unfortunately, for me, still does not get us where we need to go because it is still putting the majority of the burden in an area that is already historically overburdened. So I just want someone to help me understand why we're not doing more in other parts of the city.
So this is actually one of the new maps that was added. And what this shows, this is just one of them, this is not all of them. But this shows like kind of by, we use graduated dots. And what those dots represent is sort of the percentage increase in terms of housing units from existing. So, you know, the, i- it's by census tract, but it's a little misleading, I think, in the middle parts because it is, that census tract kind of straddles like either side of the freeway.
This is based on this, this, uh, Suitable Sites Index, right? So this is, this is going to mostly end up being inclusionary, affordable, not one hundred percent affordable, because these aren't going to be on city-owned sites.
Correct, yeah. Um, yeah. And, and I think if you, if you're talking about, this is, this is just overall, like in terms of comparing.
Like what we have right now.
Yeah. So this is what HGD actually asked us to do. They're like, we want to see the comparison between existing households, you know, and number of units that you're adding. And, you know, we don't have the breakdown in like income category, you know, so this is just a difference in overall numbers is what the dots represent. And then the, there's numbers below that represent kind of that breakdown between low, moderate and market. And, you know, you do see, like, I, you know, I, I think to, to answer your question about the city-owned site in terms of identification of the arts center as a site, certainly council could make a different choice if you wanted about another city-owned site. That is an option that you have. It does have ramifications for capacity. You know, we would need to identify a different city-owned site. And if we can't, we probably need to take a pause to go back and do the work again to see where else we can find that if we lose a city-owned site, you know, so that.
Biggest one.
Right. So that is, that, that is an idea. The capacity calculations for the city-owned sites were based on that hundred fifty units per acre, again, based on just the reality. So it wasn't, it wasn't sort of thinking through like where it's located. It was just like, here's the capacity, you know, for.
And like to the point you made to council member Negrete, I mean, if it's donation of a city-owned site and all the incentives are there, potentially they could do eight or ten stories in a steel and concrete, you know, construction if it penciled as being a good option. So.
And I think the reason I wanted to show this is just that you see the dots, like there are, it, it is not solely concentrated in that area. There's actually, the substantial amount is actually like north of Colorado, you know, in terms of grouping and in downtown. And we've even started to bleed into, you know, the sort of like north of Wilshire neighborhoods in terms of by census tract and also south of Ocean Park, you know, in the, in, in, in some of the, the other areas of the city, like north and south. You know, so this was just something, you know, mapping that we had done based on what's in the SSI. So that's kind of just showing numerically at least, you know, how the distribution is. It isn't, you know, fully concentrated.
Yeah, I just worry when we're not like distributing housing into areas that were more intended to be for housing, you know, in. No, but downtown, I get it, but it wasn't originally like, like, we're, you know, we've got our biggest dots in downtown. We're like, yes, we can build up, we can do all of these things downtown. But like, we know that we have like these great neighborhoods that accommodate families and people. And a lot of those neighborhoods already have pre-existing parks. And a lot of those neighborhoods already have good schools and, uh, that are walkable. And, and I just, I feel like we're.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think that, you know, that certainly is, that, that's a discussion for this council to have, certainly.
And it's not a popular one. I get it.
Yeah. And, and it's not, I mean, I think that's, again, that's a discussion that, that you can have. That was not the direction that we had heard, you know, from.
I know. That's why I voted against it.
Prior council actions. I, I hear you on that. I just wanted to share this. This is, you know, objectively showing where the data is landing right now, which is the distribution kind of like across, you know, many census tracts.
Just a quick follow-up on that. This data is just talking about where we're at now moving forward, right?
No, no, this is, this is actually what is proposed in the housing element.
No, I know. But, but, but do you have a document showing the, sort of the cumulative impact? Like, like where, where, where has most of the affordable housing been placed? And then, and then the plans moving forward so that we can see like which neighborhoods already have sort of, let's say, you know, a fair share of affordable housing that we were talking about, where we're putting, you know, this affordable housing? And then, and then, and then what would be the impact if we implement this plan that, that's before us tonight? So that we can see sort of the full extent of where we're placing the affordable housing within the city?
Yeah, there is mapping of where the existing affordable housing is, and it is spread throughout the city. I, the actual figure number kind of escapes me. I don't know if you have it, Rachel?
No. Map two point two on page forty-two.
Map two point two on page forty-two shows the location of all the existing affordable housing in the city.
I'm giving you a pointer because somebody asked.
Oh.
Here.
A pointer? Oh, I've got a pointer here.
Oh.
Do you need it?
Yeah, that's the one.
So, oh, no, somebody was asking. So there you go.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Uh, guys, we aren't, I'm sorry. We are not side talking. We're speaking only publicly. Councilmember De La Torre.
So I, I just, are, are you done, Councilwoman McCallen? Because if you have some more, because I like what you're saying, so come on, keep on going.
It's because we all drink the same water.
You have some more or? I'll piggyback. I'll, 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 I'll jump in to back you up. Okay. So, uh, along the lines of what Councilwoman McCallen was talking about, you, you know, one question that I have, because what I've seen so far in terms of like the increase of moderate and, you know, even moderate and, and median income housing production has exacerbated sort of the overall cost of housing in the city. It's not, it's not like the, the prices have gone down, you know, throughout the years. It's just, it is what it is. And so I'm, I'm really concerned, you know, that in terms of implementing this plan, wh- what's the impact, you know, on, on housing costs and, and gentrification, you know, in, in, in communities like the Pico neighborhood? Where, where the real, you know, the fear of displacement, you know, a lot of residents feel that the writing's on the wall, that, you know, low-income families are being displaced. And so what, what, what answer do we have to that, you know, in terms of implementing this plan? Have we, have we sort of tested it for sort of what it, what it might do in terms of displacing long-term renters, increasing, you know, housing costs overall, which?
Yeah. So I, I put this map up because again, there, there is no upzoning proposed in our multi-unit residential neighborhoods, which is where nearly all of our rent control units are located. There are rent control units in our commercial zones. They definitely are there. And you can see that, you know, on this table, the ones that are not surrounded by the red boxes are the ones that are outside of those residential neighborhoods, but ninety-seven percent of them are, are there. So in terms of, you know, the city has very strong programs to the extent, you know, allowable by law, you know, in terms of tenant protections and housing assistance and anti-displacement measures. You know, we, and, you know, there's zoning code provisions, you know, to the, to the, to the extent that that is, you know, something that is appropriate for land use. Because obviously in COSC, we've had this discussion before, you know, land use is not the panacea. It's not the solution, you know, to gentrification and to displacement. There are many, many factors that contribute to gentrification and anti-displacement. And, you know, zoning is not it all by itself, you know. There's a variety of factors and there's been, you know, demographic shifts and what have you that have happened over decades. And, you know, when you look at, Berkeley actually has a displacement project. You know, they've done mapping of this over the years of every city. And, you know, when you look at Santa Monica's map, I don't have it in front of me today, I'm sorry. But, you know, we, we've been, we've looked at it throughout this housing element process. You know, Santa Monica is very much in that sort of like advanced, you know, gentrification state, right? But it doesn't mean, and, and I think, you know, I, I, I say that to sort of highlight the approach here is that, you know, we really couldn't rely on all of those sort of macro data sources. We had to look at local factors in Santa Monica's situations within our borders. And that's based on the fair housing analysis that was done, you know, in April of twenty twenty. And so, you know, the housing elements very, very much relies on that analysis. And, you know, one of the key goals out of that was, you know, we need to produce more affordable housing. We need to support more affordable housing. And sort of, it's very much continuing the things that the city does, you know, to, to try and preserve the people that are here, preserve the, the, the residents, you know, that are already here through all of these housing preservation programs that the city has done for many, many decades. And then looking forward, how can we continue to make Santa Monica a home for, you know, the, you know, thousands, tens of thousands of workers that commute into the city every day? You know, they have a place in Santa Monica too. And so that's sort of like in the big picture. You know, that is the approach, you know, that the housing element takes. I hear, you know, certainly Councilwoman McCallen's, you know, concern about city-owned sites and, you know, where you select those, that's, those are certainly choices the city is making. That's certainly for the council's discussion. You know, if that is in fact a direction you want to give us, we would probably have to go back to look at what that means for the SSI, you know, and, you know, what other sites there are to make up that capacity. So, you know, this is.
May I ask a follow-up on that for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
So, so, uh, let's say we all think that Councilmember De La Torre is, and Mayor Pro Tem McCallen are right, and that Bergamot's not the right site, or whatever, right? But we put it in here, right? Because we haven't identified another site. And frankly, I can't imagine what would be that large. Maybe you can tell me, but I, I can't think of anything offhand. Huh?
You can't count the airport.
Yeah, but we can't touch the airport yet. So, and so for right now, we're stuck, right, you get it. I mean, I get what we're looking at, but for right now, we have Bergamot and, and recession. And, 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 and that really is the only thing that lar- I mean, is the only thing that big in the city other than the DMV. I mean, if we could convince the state, go up to Sacramento, get the state to give us that, you know, I mean. But basically, this is what we have. But this is really, and I know what the Housing Commission said, and I know what other people, you know, are saying, that this is just a paper exercise. And for some people, it may be. But you understand that I'm committed to this affordable housing and to keeping people in place. And for me, this is more than a paper exercise. But in terms of what we're saying is going to happen on these city sites, I mean, you've heard the issues with Main Street, you hear the issues with Bergamot. I think that after we're out of our current crunch, we can think about in twenty twenty-eight whether the airport's available, because it might be, right? Or, or whatever. You understand what I'm saying? But for right now, this is what we have. And if we didn't have this, then we'd have to add how many, I, I, I mean, this is the issue. We'd have to make up those eighteen hundred affordable units through inclusionary, which means our upzoning would be out of this world. So what, what I'm saying to you is that I think that right now, we're in this position. I believe that there are things that we need to do to help people who live here, who won't be able to stay here if we don't help them with rental assistance and other things, that we need to create more affordable units. But my follow-on is really, what's the alternative to Bergamot? And where are you going to put those eighteen hundred units? Because I'm not seeing an escape.
And if I could just add a data point that the team let me know. In terms of, basically, in Pico neighborhood, it's about seven percent of the capacity is being assigned to Pico.
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven percent.
So he said seven.
What's, I'm sorry, seven percent is what?
Seven, seven percent of the overall capacity in the SSI is assigned to Pico. So it's not the majority by.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that because there's a differentiation between Pico and Bergamot for the purposes of this, how this, you shook, you shook your head no.
I counted Bergamot.
Yeah.
Oh, as part, you counted Bergamot. And so this, the total, the seven hundred and seven.
Because it's by census tract, right?
The seven hundred and seven plus every other SSI identified in this housing element is a total of only seven percent going into the Pico neighborhood overall.
So I, I just had a little side conversation. Excuse me. I broke the rules with Councilmember Negrete, but, but.
I'll just disclose it all.
Well, no, I am. I'm going to disclose it right now. No, I want to talk about it because she said, well, it's only seven percent in Pico. And I go, yeah, that's because poor people, no.
That's not what I said. I said, what is it now? I said that, that what is the affordable housing now?
And the affordable housing is different than the number of poor people because most people are living in not affordable housing, rent control or otherwise, and live, and, and paying more than fifty percent. Those are the ten thousand people probably pay more than fifty percent of their income towards rent because they're struggling to keep their heads above water. But I, I think the real. But I, I think the real point here is we tried to protect Pico. And, and we've done this intentionally, and you know this, because there was that Pico plan, and we thought it would be gentrifying. So we backed off of that, and Pico is staying pretty much the same, because we understand that increasing number, you know, density and height in Pico will, will gentrify it even more. Just like those hundred-foot-wide restaurants would have, right? So, you remember, so...
Yeah, no, and, and I, I think, you know, and credit goes to the Pico Neighborhood Association and its leadership, you know, for pushing back, because the city had that plan.
So is that like credit to me?
No, not to me. I'm just saying there's an organization that's been there, started by African-Americans, leadership out of First AME Church by the Sea on Nineteenth and Michigan. And, and throughout the years, you know, this organization's continued, and they've been strong advocates. And so if not for their pushback, we would have had upzoned, you know, Pico Boulevard. And, and, and to the point of like, well, you know, the, the comment being made that, you know, we're upzoning mostly on the commercial, sort of away from residential to protect people. The reality is, what I've seen is that, you know, more density on commercial impacts residential. Like, there, there's, there's, you know, you can't separate the two. There's, there's, there's an impact. And so...
When you say more, more density on commercial...
Upzoning, upzoning.
So what are you refer, are you referring to something specific?
No, I'm just, well, you know, specifically looking at more density on Pico Boulevard, for example, you know, that was the plan with, with, with the...
Well, originally, but it didn't go...
It didn't go through. I know, we understand. So it's, so I, I recognize that. And that, and that was good policy. You know, this, this dais made good policy to protect, it listened to the residents and protected those residents. And, and that's something that, you know, we, we, the writing's still on the wall. I mean, the housing markets in Santa Monica just keeps on getting more expensive. You know, it, it doesn't seem like we can build ourselves, you know, to afford, into a place of affordability. But I think more importantly, what I wanted to understand a couple of other things. Well, one response, you know, in terms of the, the difference between Bergamot and where we can go. You know, I know the Papermate Building, you know, the Heinz Project, you know, that got shot down. Obviously, we, we know the history behind that. But has there been any discussion? I mean, all they have now is just, it seems like it's just office space. But, but has there any, has there been any discussion on, on a proposal now that the, the state laws have changed and really have incentivized the creation of housing? Any discussion with the private ownership regarding sort of what the Papermate Building might become in the future? And, and would, can it include more housing there?
I mean, it, it certainly could. You know, the developer who pursued it originally, Heinz, sold the property to another owner who created the Penn Factory, so the Creative Office Building you see there now. They invested quite a bit of money in it. You know, we haven't, we haven't heard interest from them in pursuing any other project on there other than what they have now. You can see here what's being proposed is to try and incentivize housing. We've, we've heard that, you know, in, in terms of trying to, property owners in the Bergamot area plan who've tried to do housing, that the standards that are there right now are just untenable. You know, they don't, they don't pencil out for them. And so, you know, what's proposed is substantially more incentives for housing. So that four point oh and eighty-four feet, which, you know, is right around the Expo Station. It's right on that Olympic Spine. It's something that, you know, makes sense. And then with a transition to the neighborhood. So, you know, we, we have not heard from that property owner, but I think the desire is that, you know, with these higher standards, it will incentivize or, you know, at least trigger some interest in redevelopment to housing, you know, if they ever choose to go that route.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be worth a phone call, you know, to see if, if there's a partnership there. In terms of water usage, you know, it seems to me a big contradiction that the state is imposing restrictions, you know, there's a, there's a drought, you know, and, and it seems like we're, we're not getting out of that situation. There's just, it's just very cyclical, you know. We were just in, in the same place, you know, a few years back, and now we're, you know, we, we have to do water conservation efforts. It seems like a big contradiction, you know, the state's telling us and, and many other cities, build, build and build more. And, and it seems like, like it's a contradiction with, with the current sort of environmental conditions that we're faced with. Do, do you, is there any, any pushback that we can have, you know, in terms of that issue and, and?
In terms of water?
Correct. Or even, or other infrastructure needs that, that, that this housing will, will impact in our inner city?
I mean, that's not really, I, I'm, I'm not remembering precisely, you know, in housing element law, but the exemptions, you know, and I'm just thinking even just arena allocation process, like what would qualify, you know, to appeal your, your numbers and what would actually reduce it down. Like, you know, there was one, first of all, there were only like, I think, two or three appeals granted, maybe, and two of them were like technical errors. And the one that stands out to me that I remember was, had to do with, I think it was Pico Rivera, because they're, some, they, they included land that was in what was identified as a potential like dam rupture zone by the Army Corps of Engineers. You know, so it's a high bar in terms of like the things that could be exempt. But, you know, water, I think it has to be like at a higher level, yeah.
I, I can tell you that we've heard a lot of these conversations from other cities that have also had the similar, same concerns about water. You know, they're, they're saying pretty much what you're saying, which is, you know, we're asked to build housing, but where is the water coming from? Unfortunately, I don't think they're making any headway with that, you know. And so, I mean, I think we are, you know, we are recognizing that we are in a severe drought situation. I think from the state's perspective is that by building housing closer to infrastructure and within cities and urban areas, you're helping the water situation because you're not building it in suburban areas and rural areas where it requires more infrastructure for them to bring water in.
Okay. And, and just a question on, you know, the Tenant Ownership Rights Charter Amendment, the TORCA. So, you know, the concept of creating from tenants and renters homeowners. I don't really, I, I can't find in the document, you know, except for us mentioning that that's what we've done in the city of Santa Monica. And there was a voter-approved amendment to that original TORCA. But there's no, no real mention of a plan, of, of us having a plan to, to, to do that type of creative, you know, strategy to, to, to have renters, you know, become owners of their properties. Is, is there a reason why we're not doing that specifically, even though the city has a track record of doing it in the past?
So that was a discussion that the council had, I want to say in March, maybe? And I have to look up the staff report, but we did provide information about the TORCA program. And, you know, basically, down payment assistance, you know, we, we looked at different programs. It really depends on funding and where the city wants to direct limited resources. With the TORCA program, that is, that was a very complex program, and it continues to be to this day. It wasn't, it was something that was enacted by charter amendment in the late eighties, early nineties, right? And allowed people to, it, it wasn't the tenants that selected it, it was the property owner that chose to self, you know, opt into that program to convert their, their apartment buildings and the condos. And then people were given the option to purchase. I think the information we provided to you was that we've seen some kind of negative results from that program, actually, while, while some people were able to purchase their homes. In a lot of cases, the remaining tenants who did not participate, so the non-participating tenants were harassed, you know, out of their units. We continue to deal with ramifications of TORCA to this day. You know, even the program has long sunsetted. You know, so there, in, in, I'm, I'm sort of paraphrasing all of that, but this is in conversations with our Housing Division colleagues and our City Attorney colleagues who administer that program and know far more about it than I do. You know, that that probably isn't a, something that we would recommend, you know, to, to repeat again. You know, given all of the, the sort of, you know, being able to look back at this point thirty years, you know, as to the results of that. But we, we did provide information, because there was interest earlier in this housing element process about assistance, you know, for homeownership. And, you know, cities that have done that, there, there are programs kind of like the county and the state, but it's only for, for qualifying households, typically lower-income households. We've seen very, very limited. We, we tried to look at other cities and, you know, who do this. It's, it's quite limited in terms of cities that do it. They typically have a dedicated funding source, or they might contract to someone. But, you know, I think that the real challenge is like, where do you find that funding? You know, and is, and, you know, if we were to take, you know, in terms of our local dollars, we have local housing trust fund dollars, we have housing dollars, right? And I think the question is, what's the biggest bang for your buck? Are you going to take that pot of money and, you know, allow two people, you know, to buy a home? Or are you going to help a hundred, you know, households find housing in Santa Monica? So that's sort of the cost-benefit, you know, analysis. It's just, real estate is expensive in Santa Monica. That's a fact. You know, and so in order to assist people to purchase homes in Santa Monica, it's, you know, much, it's much more an investment, you know, than it would be in other parts of California.
Kind of like the same assessment with like building affordable housing, you know, for homeless individuals where, you know, it's much more costly to do it here than other parts, you know, in the region. And, and so I've heard that, that argument be made as well. But I, 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 I think though it's important for us to sort of, we talk about low-income people and supporting low-income people. And I, you know, I'm a hundred percent in support of helping low-income people. But to make them dependent, you know, and to not provide an opportunity for, for them to create generational wealth, I think, is not really helping, you know, low-income people. Like, I want to, I want to, I, I want to seek that program out. I know that there was problems in the past, but this is a very creative city, you know, we, we're innovators and we're unique in that, in that regard. And I, I want us to reflect on, on, you know, the mistakes of the past, but maybe there's a TORCA two point oh, an opportunity, you know, for us to get it right, you know, to fix the problems with the old TORCA and figure out how we might be able to move forward in some of those areas. I mean, me personally, I'll, I'll speak for myself, that I, I feel that, I, I feel that that's part of the solution, you know, to poor people's problems in our, in our, in our country. The last question I had was around zoning. And, you know, reflecting on sort of, look, even like, you know, look Bergamon, Bergamot area, and you know, we talk about the, heard about the Gelson's Project, you know, these massive sort of buildings, because, you know, people have now, you know, the, they're incentivized, you know, to, to develop like that. On, on, on public property, it's a little different. We have a little bit more, more influence, you know, over, over those projects. But in terms of zoning, can we, can we, can we put, because that's the next phase, right? You're gonna, you're gonna, your staff's gonna get back and start looking at sort of some zoning changes that we should consider to, to make this plan work. And I'm thinking, in terms of green space, like protecting, you know, that green space or, or, or creating those types of community benefits or amenities. Do you envision that you can work those types of, those protections or those amenities, you know, through zoning? Even like, even like the, the concept of having units, let's say apartment buildings with three bedrooms, you know, so that families can raise children in, in our city. Do you, do you, do you, do you foresee that, that, that those, those types of issues can be addressed through zoning? Or how, how, how can we accomplish sort of those goals of...
So, I mean, the, the zoning code has development standards for open space and for private open space, you know, percentage of, like, within the downtown even, there's, you know, percentage requirements, you know, based on the size of the site for what needs to be open space. Now, everyone's definition of open space is different, I recognize that. You know, but that, that is an existing standard. We also have standards for unit mix, you know, that are in the zoning code. And, you know, thus far, projects that have been built are, or have been approved, have that unit mix. Going forward, again, because this, this is the impact of state density bonus law, somebody could use as one of their, what are called concessions under state density bonus law, to say, I don't want to do that unit mix, because it is, you know, a constraint on my housing project, basically. Like, it, it adds, it, it's, it's, I, I need, you know, I don't want to do three-bedroom units. I want to, I need to do more one-bedroom units in order to support the amount of affordable housing, you know, that I'm required to do in this project. So, you know, yes, like, we can establish those standards, and they are standards in the zoning code already. Certainly, there could be improvements of, of those, but, you know, we have to be mindful, not only of, you know, the, what state density bonus law allows, but also constraints under existing housing law, just housing legislation, you know, there's SB three thirty that does not allow the city to downzone. And that's sort of, you know, what, what the state views as downzoning is very broad. You know, so if you were to change development standards, even though, you know, you were trying to pursue, like you're saying, you know, these sort of, you know, more open space or more amenities, you know, if that results in potentially reducing the capacity for housing on a site, they would look at that negatively. You know, they, they would define that as downzoning. You know, so I think all of that can be explored, you know, but our ability to sort of implement, you know, all of these, you know, what would be viewed as constraints on housing, you know, is, is rather limited. But I, I did want to share at least, you know, we, we do have those standards in the code. They do exist.
If, if there's any way that, I, I just want to register my concern that building, you know, all this density without giving tenants, you know, we're talking about renters at this point, you know, an opportunity to have some breathing room, you know, to not be so clustered. I mean, the quality of life of, and the experience of living in those, in those buildings, I mean, should be considered as well, you know, and...
Yeah, you know, we, we are actually going through, we, we have a, we got a grant through the SCAG, that, that is a project that's called the Objective Design Standards Project. And it's focused primarily on Bergamot, because Bergamot has kind of a very complex set of design and development standards in it. And they're, they're very hard for the community to understand, very hard for staff and the applicant to even implement. And the purpose of that is really creating objective standards around design of buildings essentially. And so, you know, we're, we're going to learn a lot through that process. And, you know, hopefully, I think, come out better on the other end of it, kind of to address the things that you were raising. You know, in terms of, you know, how do we kind of get the kinds of things that we want out of buildings, but, you know, write it into code? You know, things that we've done through a sort of, you know, consultation and sort of influencing, you know, projects, you know, how do we sort of make that into written code? And, you know, I think we're, we're just sort of starting that process now. That'll run through, you know, kind of next summer in terms of the work on that grant.
Thank you. Thanks. So I had an opportunity to, to speak to some of planning staff earlier, but I wanted an opportunity for us to talk about it openly, openly here, so that the community can, can hear some of the great discussions we had. And one of them had to do around some of the rezoning that's going to have to take place in order to accommodate the housing element and some of the amendments to the housing element. And so I know that as we're, you know, looking forward creatively on different ways to create affordable housing, I know we were also trying to look at different ways to preserve the quality of life for our existing residents. So creatively, you know, we looked at different ways to bring housing into like commercial corridors. And so some of those ways was to allow housing in commercial or other areas. And so, talk to us a little bit about some of the upzoning, or rezoning, I should say, that is being, is being talked about, for example, in like the office campus, industrial, creative. And then also, that also would allow for potentially some adaptive reuse, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So you can see that this map here in the purple circles show where housing, multi-unit housing is actually prohibited right now. The industrial conservation zone, you can see in the middle there, that is, that's the dot there, that one there, that's the IC zone.
Oh, there's a pointer?
Here is the...
Yeah.
This is the OC, the office campus zone. So that's like the business park by the airport primarily. And then you can see here the conservation creative sector, which is a, a little blip, kind of like north of Olympic, in the Bergamot area. So those are areas where actually housing is not an allowed use. So that, what's proposed is to make it a permitted use. In all of the areas of the city in our commercial zones, housing is already a permitted use. You know, so that's not a big change. And then you can see here that in terms of, you know, where housing hasn't been accommodated in the past, what we're calling that, you know, that, though, these are areas where like the standards, where, for example, these are all the NC zones. Right now, it's like one point oh FAR, you know, cannot support housing with one point oh FAR in the NC zone. So that's why you see a rezoning, you know, of those areas in addition to the rest of the city. So it's not exclusive to those areas. Every, every commercial zone in the city is going to experience upzoning as, as part of this process. And that's this map here, you can see kind of like citywide, other than downtown and Bergamot, you know, showing what those proposed standards, you know, would be in different parts of the city. in different, uh, parts of the city. This, this is sort of a very broad view, cause obviously there's different zones on boulevards, you know, it's more nuanced, but it'd be a very cluttered map, I think, if we, um, tried to put all the standards on there.
Right. And, um, most of my questions have been answered already, but one of the other concerns that we all had and we, we spoke about was, um, this regarding the city sites. So we talked about, um, eighteen hundred units in city sites and those would affect eight city sites. And I spoke to you in particular regarding the Fourth and Fifth Street, um, site. And according to the, uh, the summary here, it said that it would accommodate approximately three hundred and something units. And so my concern there was if it did accommodate those types of that many units, you know, would there still be space for open space and, and some other community benefits as, you know, we had envisioned and something that we had talked about in the past? And then if you could talk to, to us a little bit about what that conversation entail?
I mean, I think, you know, in, in terms of wanting to reserve space for, for open space, I think that's part of, you know, the future development of that site or whether proposals we get, you know, for, for the site, there may be, uh, someone who comes for it that's able to do that minimum of, number of units and also open space. Uh, the council kind of identifies that as an objective of the site in addition to the affordable housing. You know, so theoretically, yeah, it, it, it could. We, we didn't kind of get down to that granular level on each, on, on each of these city-owned sites. It was really based on the size of the parcel, based on a hundred fifty units per acre. Like this is the, like, capacity, you know, that it could have, but we didn't go ahead and design, you know, any, any one of these.
It just, it's so, it was like, and the conversation also went on to say that it was, you know, basically that the council still can give direction about, you know, open space, about first floor ground leases, about what, what, you know, they would like to see there. And I think that that's something that's very important for people to hear and know.
Yeah, for city-owned sites, yeah.
Uh, for city-owned sites, that, that council still has, and the city still has a lot of, um, there's a lot of conversations going on. Um, but the council still has a lot of discretion about like what can and cannot go on those sites. And I think that's really important. Um, another thing that was equally important, and I said, you know, in a perfect world, um, a hundred percent housing will be, you know, developed throughout the city, and we may not have to use all of the city sites for, um, a hundred percent affordable housing. And so if that were the case, as discussed earlier, we could come back and amend the housing element, correct?
You, you could in theory, yeah.
In theory, we could do that. Well, I, I told you, in my perfect world, we could come back and we, we could do that. Um, and then, um, last but certainly not least, you know, I have to, I have to say that, um, I'm in complete agreement with what Councilmember McCallum said in terms of Burgamont Center. Um, you know, as someone that was adversely affected by, um, you know, the maintenance yard, and you're gonna hear me say it for the next three years, you know, it's just, it's kind of upsetting to me to hear, um, apartments, you know, in affordable, and I'm all for affordable housing, this has nothing to do with affordable housing, but it's really upsetting for me to hear, you know, potentially affordable housing going into Burgamont Center, when it could have gone in where the maintenance yard is, where there's other apartments and other people living instead of a twenty-four hour, seven day a week maintenance yard that we get to hear at two, three, four, and five in the morning, um, there's where people live. And so that maintenance yard should have been at Burgamont Center, and the people's homes should have been where other people are living right now. And so for, to have this discussion right now about putting houses in a commercial, industrial zone over there in place of where a maintenance yard is, is, is very upsetting to me. They should have been over here at the other end, where there's other apartments with other people and other families. And so I agree a hundred and ten percent with Councilmember McCallum, and if there's any way to make other changes, I don't want to hold up the housing element because I know there's been a lot of work. And the reality is that we are in a recession right now, um, and who knows theoretically if this, you know, if we're ever gonna be able to really build these housing units in the next eight years, but, um, yeah, my piece, thank you.
I think you're up, Councilmember Davis.
All right, thank you. Um, well, I do want to echo, uh, to all the planning staff. I know a tremendous amount of work has gone into this and you probably, you know, have HCD on speed dial, and I'm sure they have you on speed dial as well. But I do have some, unfortunately, I apologize, and you know this, cause I sent you an email with many of them, I do have a fair number of questions, but let me pick up a little bit on some of the discussions that, um, have already gone before. And one of them has to do with the issue of, uh, building affordable housing on city sites, because there are a couple of notable city sites that aren't included in your list up there. I'm just going to identify one, which is the Big Blue Bus Yards, which is downtown, where I think a lot of people agree would be an excellent place for housing. It is literally a block from an Expo line. And I know that we've invested, um, I'm, I'm sure Ed King, if he's listening to this, is at home sticking his Gleam Davis voodoo doll with pins. I know we've invested a lot of, uh, of money in that site, um, but obviously a lot of, a, a, a lot of the arena and this whole housing element thing is upending a lot of what we've done in the past. And so I'm just wondering, has anyone given any thought, for example, to the Big Blue Bus Site, which to me would be a perfect place for housing, perhaps better than putting it in the Pico neighborhood?
We, we, we did, and I am not, it's something to do with.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just a process to find another maintenance yard and to find another, it would, would take a long time. And so given this short, you know, cycle that we have, we're already in twenty twenty-two, we didn't think that, you know, when looking at that site, that it would be feasible for this cycle period, but perhaps maybe the next, um, cause there does need to be an alternative site found for the Big, um, Blue Bus.
Okay, all right, thanks, I appreciate that. Um, and then we have talked about the city sites and what they, you know, and I just want to clarify, what would be the process for any city site? Would we have to go through the Surplus Lands Act process, or could we do a direct RFP, which for example, could say, we want X number of housing units, but we want to maintain X number of ground level space for open space, or maybe at Fourth and Fifth in Arizona for the beloved ice rink, um, that everyone seems to forget about, or, or whatever? I mean, so I'm curious, what kind, would we sort of be at the mercy of the Surplus Lands Act, or would be able to do an RFP that could include, you know, open space requirements and things like that?
I think I can, maybe we want to address that. Um, I, I, I think you can just, if you have affordable housing on it, I don't think you have to.
Well, uh, Surplus Land Act does emphasize, uh, housing, but also open space and green space is part of what is emphasized also.
So presumably we could say we want to put a hundred percent affordable housing at Fourth and Fifth in Arizona, but we also want to make sure that whatever gets developed there leaves, adequate open space for a public plaza, some green space, ice rink, whatever the council decides. Okay, great, thank you. Um, and, and I do want to address the issue of the drought, because people always, you know, are worried about where are we gonna get the water? And, and the people that we're talking about building this housing for, if we don't build the housing for them, they're not going to vaporize, right? They're just going to live somewhere else, which is probably also in a drought, uh, cycle. I mean, because if they have a job in Santa Monica, but they can't afford a house in Santa Monica, then they're going to live in Alhambra, or Chino Hills, or Palmdale, or Lancaster, and all of which are affected by the, I mean, you can go all the way to Texas, and you're still gonna be affected by the drought. So isn't that, oops, I apologize so much. Um, isn't that really part of, of the issue? That, you know, even though we're saying, well, gee, we have concerns about building housing and having infrastructure, the people, if we don't build the housing for them, are not going to go away, they're just going to be a drain on infrastructure, on water resources somewhere else, correct?
Yeah, and that was, um, this was actually a conversation that was had during the arena allocation process. Um, and you'll see, like, there, there was, the reason that our numbers are high, actually, and this is the case for all of the coastal cities, was there was a shift away from like Riverside County, you know, and, and other sort of, the Fort like desert, uh, communities in SCAG, you know, was really looking at it from that, like, bigger picture, um, smart growth perspective. You know, if you're gonna add, uh, if there's, you know, the population, like you said, they're not, you know, leaving the state, you know, where, where, where will people live, where will these workers, uh, live, you know, who can't afford to live, they, you know, is it sustainable to have them continue to, uh, you know, commute from Rialto, you know, and, and communities further east? Or, you know, do we, um, you know, look at, um, trying to, uh, you know, make a correction, you know, for allowing people to have a chance to live closer to where they work? So that, that sort of perspective, you know, was, um, discussed as part of the arena allocation process.
And actually, it's a climate change issue as well, because if people live in Rialto and work in Santa Monica, and they're on the ten or the sixty freeway coming in, um, they're more likely than not in an internal combustion engine spewing greenhouse gases into the, uh, atmosphere, whereas if they can live in the same city in which they work, they can walk, bike, take transit, that sort of thing, isn't that true? Okay, um, so, so I've heard, and, and I apologize in advance, you know, I remain very concerned about the concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing, but let me start with this. So the programs that specifically address that are 4E, which are the SB nine duplex slash lots bits, blitz, in, um, on parcels above ten thousand square feet, and then 4F, which is, um, some metrics, you know, we are hoping to have, I think, what is it? Forty-six units a year or something like that? And that, that sort of corresponds to our prediction about ADUs built in the R1 district, is that right?
Right, um, but I, I, I do want to emphasize, it's not the AFFH, the way HCD reviews it, it's not just those two programs. They actually looked at AFFH like permeating across every single program. So they actually reviewed every program, like, just except for a handful, and they gave us kind of like, you know, a sheet kind of assessing each one, and they were looking sort of like at four main things, you know, one, like we mentioned, was the metrics, like, do you have a metric, you know, for the program you have here? Is there any geographic targeting? Is there a timing component? And, you know, what's the commitment level? Um, and, you know, from, and they were looking at it from the perspective of AFFH, from does it address these areas that they've defined in the guidebook in terms of, it was like, you know, housing mobility, does it increase housing choice and affordability and, or increase, it's, it's that word they use, the housing opportunity in higher opportunity areas? Um, and, you know, it was, the, the reason it's different in Santa Monica, as I said, is like, our city is actually defined as a high, high and highest opportunity, but the whole city is a highest, high opportunity area. So, um, they were basing it kind of on our local analysis, which we provided a lot, um, in our housing element. But it's not just those programs, it's, every program was assessed, um, you know, for how, does it meet the goals of AFFH?
All right, and, and has, I mean, has HCD said this will be sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Um, because I have to say that, and from my perspective, I honestly don't think it is.
I, I should caveat, like, yes, positive feedback now, but subject to further detailed review and public comment.
Sure, sure, uh, uh, cause I, I do have serious concerns, and, and I understand there's a whole range of programs that you're talking about, but the two that are really, shall we say, new to Santa Monica, that we haven't been doing otherwise, for example, trying to keep people in their homes and address the issue of rent burden and things like that. And obviously we have, you know, one of the best rent control laws in the country, that sort of thing, all of which obviously, uh, I believe contribute to affirmatively furthering fair housing in the generic sense of the term. But, you know, as I see it, there are two real specific programs here, and one is on lots over ten thousand square feet, if somebody chooses to use SB nine to build a duplex as opposed to their fifteen thousand foot mansion that they bought or whatever, then we're going to let them build an ADU. Um, and, and I know, uh, anecdotal evidence is not data, but, um, certainly the people I know, uh, who live on those lots, who live north of Montana, who have been building ADUs, while we have seen some enthusiasm for ADUs, those ADUs are not being put on the open rental market, are they?
We actually don't have great data about what happens to those ADUs. We attempted to get some survey information, didn't get awesome responses, so it's actually hard to know.
Yeah, it's, well, I will tell you, my experience has been, most of them are either using them as guesthouses, offices, gyms, media rooms, um, none of which, in my mind, affirmatively further fair housing. The closest ones that come are, some of them are being built for their household staff, which is a good thing, but I'm not really sure that's sufficient for affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, and so for me, as I look at, and if you put up the map about housing potential by census tract?
You mean the dot one?
Yeah, the dot one, the dot one you had up in response to Mayor Pro Tem McCallum. So I look at this and, and, and the interesting thing is, is there are two factors reflected here. The darker, uh, areas, um, you know, the darker brown or beige areas are, uh, the percentage of low to moderate income population, so the darker the area, the higher percentage of low to moderate income population, correct?
That's right, yeah.
And that's where the biggest dots are. I mean, yes, I know there are dots in other neighborhoods, but the biggest dots are in the neighborhoods that already have the highest percentage of, of economically disadvantaged people. And the dots north of Montana are very, very tiny. And, and I really think that when the state imposed the goal of affirmatively furthering fair housing, what they were really talking about was flipping this script. They were talking about, how do you look at the truly high resource neighborhoods? And yes, we're talking about the R1, and how do we, and no one's talking about scraping the R1s and building all apartment buildings, but it, would it really be so horrible if every year in the R1 neighborhoods, there were two or three multiplexes built, a sixplex, an eightplex, a tenplex? Would it destroy the neighborhoods? And I think the answer is no, but what you then would have was more affordable housing in what are the most, considered the most desirable areas of our city, moving people into these high resource neighborhoods. And, and all you have to do is talk to people at the school district, and I'm sure Councilmember De La Torre knows that. The intra-district permits are people moving from Will Rogers and Mirror to Franklin and Roosevelt, the north of Montana schools. And if we could move some families into that north of Montana neighborhood, so they could go to those schools, to me, that would be a really good thing. That's what we're talking about, moving people into high resource neighborhoods and affirmatively furthering fair housing. And I think this map sums it up best. We're gonna build the most housing where the already rent burdened, already economically disadvantaged people are, and we're gonna build the least amount of housing where the rich people are. And to me, that is not affirmatively furthering fair housing, and I can't support 4E and 4F as being a solution to that problem. Second issue, parking requirements. Um, I asked you in an email, why not just get rid of minimum parking requirements? In the city of San Diego, for example, they did, and they found that they got a real boom in housing, but most importantly, the housing that was being built was a lot of missing middle housing, because parking, every parking space, as we've all heard dozens of times, depending on who you talk to, costs between twenty-five to seventy-five, and now maybe even a hundred thousand dollars to build. If you can take that kind of cost out of each unit, you can charge less rent, or in the case, if you want to do homeownership, a lower price for that. And the response you gave me, which I'm, I'm not criticizing, you're absolutely right, is that the council didn't want to do that. Is that correct? I mean, there's no legal reason that we have to have parking minimums in the city, is that correct? I mean, and in fact, many cities like San Diego have removed them.
Yeah, I mean, in our downtown, there's no minimum parking.
Right. So, so the, the point I want to make here is that I view parking requirements as a constraint on housing, but what's really the constraint on housing here, with all due respect to my colleagues, is our political will. Our political will to do the things that will cause more housing to be built. We could tonight give you direction to say, pay, take all the parking minimums out. Now, I know we won't, I understand that. But I just want to make it clear that the decisions we're making are not, oh, gosh, you know, the state won't let us remove parking minimums. Those are affirmative decisions that we are making that are in fact placing constraints on housing. So let's talk about density bonus law. Um, as I understand it from, um, our exchange, our email exchange, we are going to maintain the five-five-five requirement, five percent very low income, five percent low, I'm not, I may not be getting the terminology wrong, five percent low income, five percent moderate, is that correct?
Yeah, five very low, five low.
And one of the other goals of this, uh, housing element was, you mentioned bringing our local ordinances in harmony with state density bonus law, cause there's been some tension between the two. And I asked, doesn't the five-five-five requirement create some issues? Because under state density bonus law, someone could say, I want to do fifteen percent very low income, and I want to then invoke my rights under state density bonus law, but we would say, fine, but you still also have to do the five percent low income and the five percent moderate, right? Which now means they're really doing twenty-five percent, uh, deed restricted affordable housing, not the fifteen percent they want to do, which may make the project infeasible. And that's my question, is have we, and, and, and the answer may be yes, I just don't remember, and I couldn't dig out the old HRNA study. Have we done a feasibility study that shows? Have we done a feasibility study that shows if we use that 555 configuration, that we will, we will not be creating a constraint on building housing using state density bonus law?
Yeah, that, that was what was modeled in the feasibility analyses, was the 555. You know, we've actually, subsequent to October, sort of in the intervening period, we've done a lot of research actually on inclusionary ordinances as we were revising the AHPP. We actually got pretty far along on, on those changes, and that sort of approach of dividing up the inclusionary requirement isn't at all unusual across the state. And we found at least 30 examples of cities in Northern and Southern California, you know, that, that do that. You know, so this is, this is something that I'm sure we could find more if, you know, we went through it, but that was at least, as, as we were just looking at, you know, modernizing, bringing up best practices, you know, for inclusionary ordinances, you know, that's kind of what we found.
Well, I understand that other cities have done that. That does a little different than my question. A lot of cities have done a lot of things that have not necessarily been conducive to building more housing. So, we don't think that if someone comes in and says, I want to build 15% very low income units, and then I want to take advantage of state density bonus law, that imposing, that they build an additional 10%, because that's what it effectively would be, 10% deed restricted affordable housing, would make the project infeasible? We don't think that would be a problem?
Well, that's something they're voluntarily choosing to do. Their obligation is only 15% divided among five, and I think, you know, it's important to remember kind of the policy reason, you know, that the council went for that is because, you know, so that we could get units at all income levels, because there were, there were other discussions on the table in terms of, you know, having it favored towards like moderate income, or should it just be all very low income, or is it, you know, lower income? And, you know, that was kind of where it ended up, you know, in terms of trying to get units at all levels, just because our RENA is at all income levels, and, you know, moderate income is the one, is the one income level that is very difficult actually to, to find. There's no dedicated funding source, so it, it comes almost exclusively, you know, through inclusionary housing.
All right, and, but I, I guess my concern is, I mean, we had that discussion, but if it renders, using the state density bonus law, infeasible, have we not really put a constraint on housing? I mean, because, because what we keep hearing, I mean, we heard this in the context of the downtown community plan, where we raised the inclusionary numbers, and then we didn't get any housing, and...
True, we got the Vons.
We got the Vons, but the Vons is a super big project on a single parcel thing, that in, what we did did not generate a lot on single parcels. We didn't generate a lot of housing, and we had the experience, or watched the experience in San Francisco, where they actually reduced their inclusionary requirements, because they weren't getting housing.
So, I mean, in, in terms of setting this requirement, these were not, the, the FARs that are being proposed are not infeasible, you know. They, we, we modeled the feasibility analyses based on these assumptions, you know, so the FARs that are being set are very feasible already absent, because we cannot account for state density bonus, we're not allowed to account for that capacity and the SSI. So, the, the results, you know, of that analysis have to be feasible by definition. So, you know, it would be feasible for someone to pursue that project. If they choose to avail themselves of state density bonus law, they're allowed to do that, you know, and they're allowed to request, you know, all of the bonuses and incentives, concessions and waivers that are allowed under state law for that.
And under state density bonus law, if they use our 555 model, don't they get, do they get more, the same or fewer concessions and opportunities to build?
They would get the, the, the largest percentage under state density bonus law. So, in this case, it would be based on probably the, it's the 5% very low, which is the 20% bonus for the project.
Okay. And, let me, hang on. The program to be the right of first refusal to nonprofits, and you already spoke about this a little bit, and, and I, I gather we're still thinking about this, but is there any reason not to grant it throughout the city, including in existing R1 zones, for example?
I don't see, I mean, I don't think we've gotten to that level yet, but I don't know why there would be a geographic limitation on that. I can't think of a reason why.
Okay. And then, the prior SSI sites, and I know that there were different numbers floating around, and I think we're down to actually, I think, 21 sites that were identified in the prior suitable sites inventory that we consider high probability for development, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And, and, and I know you have a map that has them broken out, but it's the same blue as every other thing, so I can't, where, where are they? Can you generalize, or are they just spread throughout the city? I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of that.
Oh, you mean where, yeah.
Because those are the sites that if there's a 20% affordable housing project, boom, it can get built, because it was identified in the prior cycle, so...
We have category two.
I'm just trying to figure out where we, I mean, because it seems to me those would be the easy peasy projects.
That's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of spread out. There's 21 sites, one I could name is the Snyder Diamond site. There's a few on Wilshire, there's a couple of grocery stores off of Wilshire that are the prior SSI sites.
Colorado, Lincoln.
There's, they're mostly off of Colorado and Lincoln, and a couple on Fifth Street.
Okay, all right. So, they're spread somewhat throughout the city? They're not, and, and they're not in the Pico neighborhood?
I would say so. It's MUBL, NV, no, not, no, not in Pico, it's MUBL and NV downtown, so mostly.
All right, so, I mean, because I, I looked at that map, and at least, no matter how big I made it on my computer, I could not discern the difference in the colors.
No, I mean, you wouldn't be able to, they're all the same color.
Okay, all right. I'm not crazy then, thank you.
Actually, on the website, we'll update it, but the website should be interactive, and so when you actually click on a site, it'll tell you which category it is, and so we'll make sure it's updated by tomorrow.
Yeah, because, because I think since, since those sites are in a, have a particular status, namely 20% affordable, boom, start building, put your shovel in the ground, that we, I would like to know where they are, and I think people would like to know where they are, because they're probably likely to be among the first sites that are developed, if the owners are so inclined. And then my, my last question, and, and I guess this is maybe, I guess, more of a generic question. So, so if, if this draft housing element is submitted to HCD, and assuming that they give us a conditional approval or whatever it is, and, and our, the October 15 deadline, I understand that's the current state of the law. I also understand there's at least one potential lot, legal challenge, not challenge, but, but it's being proposed in the state legislature to extend that. Do we have any sense about how likely we are to get that extension? It's for all the SCAG cities, as I understand it.
Boy, we've tried.
[laughing]
I think all we can say on that is it's going, it's making its way through the process, and it'll, we, we've definitely had conversations with everybody who's been part of drafting that legislation. I don't know that it's had to any great effect. There, there is, you know, there, there is some conditions, you know, under which that deadline could be extended, unfortunately, like if, if it's the last version that we saw, I'm not sure it really helps us, you know, which is why we need to continue to pursue, you know, this, this parallel process. But, you know, we continue to, I think, you know, highlight that we are still very much interested in an extension of that deadline, and to demonstrate, you know, good faith efforts to, you know, pursue a compliant housing element. I don't, you know, we're not, we're not giving up on the process, you know, like maybe some cities may, may be on right now, so...
We're not counting our chickens before they're hatched.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's, that's always good advice. So, I guess my final question is, we're obviously, you set forth a number of, of minimum zoning, and I'll count, they're, they're not rezoning, it's upzoning, proposed upzoning for Wilshire, Santa Monica, some other streets. And, and the numbers that you put in, those, the charts, those are the minimums we need to adopt prior to, because if we don't, then we're not going to meet RENA allocation by your analysis, or by HCD's analysis, whoever's analysis counts, right?
Right, yeah, these, these represent the, the RENA plus the buffer we were talking about.
Right.
So, yeah.
And I totally understand the buffer, because even in the old days, when there were no, there was no hammer connected to the housing element, we never, I mean, it's very hard, because you can't predict someone's, you can't make someone turn their car lot into housing, or their Snyder Diamond store into housing, or, I'll say it, El Cholo into housing.
Or their charging lot.
Well, that's, yeah.
Two lots, I should say.
In any event, right. So, that's my point, is we can't, we can't tell private property owners, you must build housing here. So, so the buffer is necessary in order to make sure that we, you know, make a good faith effort to meet that. So, just hypothetically, so we're all aware of what's coming, when you bring us back zoning stand, proposed zone, upzoning standards, this is what we're going to see.
Yes.
And if we don't vote for it by October 15, then you can go to the chart that says all the horrible things that are going to happen to us, is that correct?
Right, we would be out of, I mean, we're out of compliance already, you would be out of compliance again, there'd be another trigger.
Okay, and then, on that chart for compliance, the very first thing you listed is what's commonly known as the builder's remedy, right?
Correct, yeah, that's the 20%.
Which is no height or FAR restriction, so long as it's 20% affordable.
Correct, yeah.
And doesn't matter what the property's owned for, is that correct?
That is the situation we're in now.
Right, right. So, someone could, in theory, not that they're going to, but pick a parcel, say, I'm going to build a 10-story building, 20% affordable, and there's nothing new City of Santa Monica can do to stop it.
Right, we, I mean, I, I don't want to...
I mean, they have to, they have to meet certain...
We have to see the project, you know, and sort of like, understand the request, but, yeah, like, they could, there, there is no, it, it can exceed zoning and general plan maximums.
All right, thank you, and thank you again for all the hard work on this.
So, I think Councilmember Negretti has one point she, is that right?
No, I just wanted to, to, we, you mentioned, Councilmember Davis mentioned parking, and we've talked about it before, and I understand the point being made that more could be built for that, but I just wanted to make a point on a couple of things. We talk a lot about families, and the idea that we, a lot of these buildings aren't suitable for families in terms of the number of bedrooms. And families have a car, even people who are low income. As a matter of fact, I think there's studies that show that most families who are low income have cars, and because they're working far, they have to take their kids to school, to wherever they need to go, and it's just not, we are not like New York City, we have a great transit system, yes, but it is not how some of these bigger cities are, and we just don't travel on trains with our kids. So, I think we have to be mindful that, because when I hear no parking, I hear, oh, sure, for a building with one bedrooms and studios, for people who ride their electric scooters around, that's, totally makes sense. But when we're talking about housing families, we need to consider the constriction and the, the needs that families have.
Right, but can I respond to that?
Yes.
Which is, when you eliminate parking minimums, you're not saying, don't build parking. What you're just saying is you're not imposing a parking minimum requirement. Most buildings that are built in an area where there is no parking minimum, in fact, have parking, they just build less of it, and it saves them money. So, no one's talking about, let's not let anybody build parking. All we're talking about is getting rid of the ordinance or statutorily driven minimums that would let the developer decide, gee, in order for me to rent these apartments, I'm going to need one space per unit, so I'm only going to build one space per unit, even though our current standards for some units require you to build two, or that sort of thing. So, it's not no parking, it's just getting rid of the required minimums and letting the person who is developing the property make the decision about how much parking they want to provide. And believe me, if they think not providing any parking will cause people to not live there, they won't build it.
But not if they're building for people, if it's, if they're trying to put in affordable...
Affordable has no parking minimums already. That, we're not talking about that.
But not for the units that are mixed? I'm talking about where there's a small percentage of affordable units. You're pushing people to park on the street, because families are going to have two cars.
No, no, you're letting the developer decide how much parking instead of putting arbitrary limits on it.
The developer's pushing them, we aren't.
Well, but my point is, it's not no parking. In 100% affordable projects, there's already no parking minimum. So, I mean, I, I don't, you know, look, Seattle's done this, San Diego's done this, they're not not building parking, but they're building a lot less of it, and more importantly, what they're finding is that their rents are reduced in those buildings, because they're not paying $100,000, $100,000 per unit to build more parking than is going to be required. So, that's, that's the issue.
We can just provide some, like, perspective on what we've seen since the DCP, because that, that is our local experience in terms of no minimum parking requirements. You know, what we've seen is, I, I don't believe we've yet seen a project that has absolutely no parking in it. In all cases, I think some of the developers actually came forward and were concerned about our parking maximums. Parking requirements weirdly are driven sometimes by the lender, who's establishing, you know, like, we want you to build X number of spaces, and again, it speaks to the marketability of that housing unit, is what we've heard thus far. That will probably evolve over time, you know, as people kind of figure out whether it works for them, but that's at least, you know, five years out from the DCP adoption. There are no minimum requirements downtown, but pretty much every housing project that's been brought forward since then has parking in it.
Right, but there are, because I have, I do know of three or four families who have to find parking, and that was a constraint for them, because by the time they got into the building, which is an affordable unit, they did not have parking available for them, including Tracy, we helped, who would have to park at the mall.
And, and we have heard from affordable housing providers that they do absolutely need parking on site. I think they understand, it, it is a cost, without a doubt, but they, they do need a, you know, for, for the tenants in the building.
On that note, just as we talk about families and creating quality of life and location, everybody here's, most of the council members here have mentioned where it's placed, and Councilmember Davis just mentioned, like, where the schools are. I mean, I was bussed to go to the schools on the north side from where I was, and just considering the constraints it puts on the Title I schools that are already impacted in those neighborhoods, and how we're not looking outside of that, because what ends up happening to those schools is they become, you know, there's less diversity, is that what, what ends up happening at the other schools? So, I do hope that we look at other areas in terms of where we can put those dots. I understand everything you said about packing it in at larger locations, but on that note, you know, this idea of how far and how tall and how many people can we pack into a place, I go back to quality of life, because if this is really about the majority of people who, it's about affordability and providing housing for people who wouldn't otherwise afford to live there, I don't think we should just be thinking about packing everyone in. That's not an ideal place to raise your family, with not enough windows, with not enough lights, with not enough open space, and just thinking, how many families or people can we stack into a building? These are people, and these are people who we hope will be able to live here and have some sense of quality of life, and living in a six, seven, eight-story building with, with kids, with a family is, to me, is, that's not the most ideal situation. So, I just, I just keep hearing like this going bigger and taller so that we can stack more people in there, and, or more units, which more families, right, presumably, and just considering that when we're looking at FAR and height. But anyways, I just wanted to echo the concerns of where the, where these other opportunities to build are as well, going forward.
I mean, you know, the, the maps I showed, I, I just want to note that they don't, like, we can't count ADUs as part of our SSI, like the SSI plus ADUs, it's too speculative to be selecting R1 parcels, you know, as like, oh, here's where an ADU is going to be. So, you don't see that reflected in the maps that I showed, but we do know, you know, it is immensely popular. We're, we're required to allow SB9. SB9 does allow for like lot splits, and, you know, we, we've had this discussion both at the City Council and Planning Commission, is, you know, this, this notion of, you know, reducing the cost of housing and opening ownership opportunities. Now, it's not affordable ownership, you know, but if, it allows you to split, you know, what is currently a 7,500 square foot lot in half, and, and we are seeing, I mean, just, I'll say, just from our planning staff's perspective, we're seeing inquiries, there is interest in some homeowners in doing that, and if it makes, you know, in theory, what is a $5 million property, a $2.5 million property, that is not affordable for most people, you know, but, you know, it does lower, you know, that a little bit, and it's that, you know, that, that is the introduction, you know, of, of some level of additional choice where it wasn't there before, and I think we've talked through, in terms of SB9, it does allow the opportunity, and I hear you on the 10,000 square foot threshold, we don't have to have a number in there, it could just be larger parcels, that's something certainly you could discuss. We don't need to be specific in that program for it to be operative, that could be something you discuss later as part of implementation, if you want that flexibility, but we did talk through in, in our study session about how you get to six units through SB9. The council certainly has choices as to whether you want to allow it concurrently or through a multi-step process, you know, for example, so, you know, those are some options on the table. for example, so, you know, those are some options on the table that SB9 sort of like opens up, you know, if you allow it in terms of a combination ADU/SB9 project.
I hope we look at Torca opportunities in the future, and I just worry for buildings like my own, I mean, I know our landlord owns multiple buildings, and I, these, the concerns I have with the residents are, you know, all this upzoning makes it more attractive to come and buy these really large, older apartment buildings who are, who've been paid off, right, there's maybe no mortgage on them anymore, and the relocation, as it stands now, is feasible to move families out, and those apartments are housing income-restricted tenants, whether they be senior citizens or families, just by way of rent control, and so, you know, I hope we consider that when we look at...
Preservation works, you know.
Well, I hope, I hope that it, it works that way, and it doesn't become, if we can go this tall and this far out, that it's actually feasible to go ahead and, and pay people to move.
I mean, it's, it's a big reason we, we push back on any notion of upzoning in our residential neighborhoods, that's, that's never been something that's on the table for our, our multi-unit residential neighborhoods, you know, it is, that, that is very, very important housing stock for the city, you know, to allow that sort of, you know, this sort of affordability you're talking about, you know, as those units turn over, they are, you know, tend to be at that lower price point, they, you know, have multiple bedrooms, they're existing, you know, they are near parks and schools, and, and what, they, they are our residential neighborhoods, right, and that's a big part of the fair housing strategy, is that, you know, I think what you're talking about is sort of, you know, in terms of new build, you know, we, we don't wanna be wading into our residential neighborhoods 'cause that displaces the existing folks that are there, and so it's looking at the kind of commercial areas that are around it, you know, and opportunities to introduce more housing there.
But when you say that, you're talking about the, we're not just talking about the boulevards, and it's highlighted the whole area, like in Sunset Park, for example, Ocean Park, 16th, it's...
It's, it's the boulevards, I, I mean, we're, yeah, we, again, we are, we're not talking about upzoning multi-unit residential neighborhoods, so the R2, R3, R4, that's, that is not something that is being discussed as, as part of this housing element, that is, that, that has never been a growth strategy, you know, as part of the loose, it was about protecting the residential neighborhoods, you know, to, to reduce the chances of displacement.
Okay, so, well, Jing, it's been a long road, all I can say is, and, and I do wanna say thank you, I mean, this has been, you know, and you and I have been talking throughout, and, and we don't always agree, but I think we're actually coming a lot closer. So, look, we're a little city, we have 8.3 square miles, I, the only thing that makes me feel terrible is when I talk to the folks from West Hollywood who have 1.3 square miles, and they're trying to do sort of the same thing, but we just don't have a, a lot of land, other than the airport, which is basically unavailable to, to us till 2028. We have limited city land, and, and had we not chosen the strategy of doing, doing only affordable, 100% affordable on city land, we were talking about this today because there's a penalty we would've had to pay, and it would've greatly increased our, our, our requirements, but we're never getting any cheaper, we can build to the sky, we could be Manhattan, in fact, we're sort of like Manhattan, 'cause we're an island in Los Angeles, right, Los Angeles is on three sides, and we have the beach, we have the train, we have the freeway, I mean, we have an airport, what don't we have, I mean, who wouldn't wanna be here, and that's our problem, and, and we're incredibly expensive, and this is not guns and butter, because if what we wanna do, and, and particularly with affordable housing, because if we wanna build affordable housing, that is what we want, we want the people who work here to live here, I mean, people keep talking about bringing in all these outsiders, these people are here every day, they are not outsiders, the people who we are giving the right to return are not outsiders, they lived here for probably longer than people who say, we don't want all these new people here, they were here before, they were displaced by the freeway, and, and now we're bringing them back, all, these are not new people, these are people who live here, the people who are living on the streets include people who live here, who have lived here longer than I have, or Gleam has, right, those of us who aren't born and bred in Santa Monica, a lot of people who say, oh, I don't want any more people in Santa Monica, but, look, we need a, a plan, I don't think this is the plan, I think here, what, we need to be realistic, what we're doing is we're putting, and, and despite what the Housing Commission said, Oscar, we are really putting on paper what the state is requiring us to put on paper, I think that we have a more humane, more equitable, and more inclusive vision of what our city can be than the state does, I think the state is just using a sledgehammer to drive all of the SCAG region into compliance, and, and we're one of them, I think that we've managed to do a little pushback and get a little bit of leeway, but I think that ultimately, and, and if I haven't sent it to you, write to me and I'll send it to you, but there was an APA article that I've been sending around that basically says that we in West Hollywood should be model cities for the rest of the region, because, and I think that Jing will tell you this, that we have been teaching HCD how to do affordable housing, right, I mean, they had no idea how we were doing the things that we're doing, and I think that we have programs that other people are putting into their housing elements that nobody had ever thought of before, now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that, you know, with our planning department and, and with our very engaged residents and our engaged population, we have tried really hard to find a way to have more people at more income levels, a, and to do it in a way that doesn't sacrifice the Pico neighborhood, and doesn't sacrifice, you know, Ocean Park, or doesn't, or doesn't sacrifice the airport, and it is a very hard road to navigate, but I think that we need to get this thing, you know, the housing element, I think that it's a plan, and it's a best plan we could come up with under these dumb restrictions where you don't think about sustainability, you don't think about who's living there, yeah, I mean, all, all they're thinking about is these numbers, how many people, and what color are they, and what is their income, right, and that is a really, kind of, unsophisticated way of looking at things, you're just taking it and cramming it in, so, look, I think that we know, and we try to know who lives here, I hope, right, we understand we need more affordable housing, I think everybody knows that, we need to keep the people who are in both our rent-controlled units and our affordable housing in their housing, because it's getting, with the recession, with the recession that's looming, and with the high cost of gas and food, these folks are gonna be struggling, and, and we're gonna be needing to help them, it's one of the reasons that, you know, that I, I keep trying to raise money for more affordable housing and for rent subsidies, et cetera, et cetera, and why I think it's important that we just get this to the state and start working on actually putting into place the programs that will allow us to do the work, because this is really, I hate to say it, and I know you've put so much time into it, but sort of an intellectual exercise. So, so if we do that, and what can we expect to happen in the next six months?
I mean, we'll, we'll just review the... So this is, this is kind of a draft timeline, you know, if we have the council's permission to submit these draft red line revisions, this is kind of, like I said, the perfect world, you know, if things go well, our goal would be to get a drafting compliance letter from HCD, once we get that letter, it would give us the confidence to be able to proceed forward with the zoning changes, we didn't have that when we started working on zoning changes, you know, in November through February, before we got the letter that indicated that our housing element was not compliant, you know, so I think we're trying to make sure that it's not more effort wasted this time around, and, you know, that we, we have worked very closely with HCD staff in terms of consultations, they've given us preliminary positive feedback to these red lines, they've actually viewed all of these red lines, and, you know, like I said, subject to detailed review and public comment, of course, you know, but I think, you know, they, we, we feel like we're, we're in a spot where we've worked closely with them to, you know, put together language and requirements, you know, that, that would meet housing element law, you know, so if we get to that point, our hope is to be able to work on the zoning, and, you know, be able to bring back potentially zoning with the housing element document, maybe we could do it together, just 'cause we got it, we got so far with the Planning Commission, actually, in February, you know, that's certainly, I think, a discussion, you know, we can have later in terms of, you know, managing the council's agenda, you know, in the fall, but, you know, we actually do have a lot of these zoning red lines drafted already, you know, if, if you look at the Planning Commission's agenda from February 2nd, there was a ton of work that was putting on zoning changes, so that's why we feel like we're in a position to sort of pick up where we left off, if HCD says yes, you know, looks like your housing element is, is, you know, that these draft red lines are in compliance, it allows us to move forward and then be able to, be able to adopt, you know, the policy piece and the implementation piece with our completed environmental analysis in the fall, is, you know, what we would hope to do, and, you know, be able to be within our statutory deadline.
And, and let me just say that I, I do not completely buy into this, completely buy in, I am appalled by the state's approach to this whole process, and I still believe that they shouldn't be allowed to do this, and that there, that there should be controls on this, and, and there, there probably ought to be a lawsuit, but, but I also am gonna move that we ask staff to submit the draft red line revisions to HCD for 60-day review, at least to get it on the table, and see if I can get a second.
Still, one, one more comment, which I'd like to add before you make the motion, is that possible?
Yeah, you can make the comment even if I make the motion.
But then it might have to be more specific.
So, make your comment, please.
So, I wanted to answer and mention a couple of things that I heard over the last hour and a half or so. In regard to Councilmember Delatorre talking several times about open space, and open space in apartments, I wanna remind everyone that we have less park space in Santa Monica than the state average, that I worked hard, along with many others, to landmark San Vicente's garden and courtyard apartments, I wanna emphasize garden and courtyard apartments, because 18 buildings on San Vicente between Ocean and 7th have open space as part of the unit, and the reason it was deemed a historical landmark is simple, it gave people a better place to live, they walked out of their apartment, not into a corridor, but into green space, a place to breathe, a place to be outside, a place, as, as Councilmember Delatorre said, and Councilmember Negretti said, to raise their children better, and I think that's important, that we try and integrate open space in. Councilmember Delatorre talked about renting to own, whether it's Torca, or I believe, I may be mistaken, but in LA, they have a Section 8 rent to own, I thought, which is you use all the rent you've paid, or some cities have it, rent you've paid has down payment to buy your unit, and I think that is something, we, we mentioned this one year ago, that we thought there should be some way to rent to own, some way for people to rent and be able to get equity, and be able to own their apartment at some point, I said a year ago that I had three friends in Santa Monica who all were Torca conversions, none of whom ever sold their units, they've stayed in Santa Monica because of their Torca conversions, so I think that part of the program, while maybe it had some problems, I agree with Councilmember Delatorre, it should be revised, we should look at it seriously and look at adding that. Parking, so, yes, for most units, they still can give parking, and I recall on Broadway and 4th, when a building could not be built where the Capital One Cafe is right now, because they tried to get a mortgage with no parking, and the mortgage, the bank would not give them a mortgage without parking, in Venice, many, many buildings have forever had uncoupled parking or no parking, and you see the streets there, and yes, people waste a lot of gas driving around looking for that, it does not lower the cost of your rent whatsoever, it's not like the landlord built the building, saved money, and then graciously decided they would pass it on to tenants, they just don't, so, I, I do wanna mention that. And, and that also disregards, I think as Councilmember Negretti mentioned, that people many times, they may work in Santa Monica and be happy, and then they get a transfer, or they get a new job somewhere else in LA, we don't require them to give up their apartment, and, public transportation being what it is in Los Angeles, public transportation could take them an extra hour, two hours a day to get to their new job, and if they have children, many times, how do they go to the market, how do they find the normal things to take kids to lessons if they're fortunate enough to be able to take them somewhere, or the Boys and Girls Club, or the Y, or anywhere, because I don't think in today's environment, you're gonna, gonna tell your child, yeah, go for a walk, it's only a mile that way, you'll be safe, walk there, that's not the, what's going on in Santa Monica right now, probably not anywhere in LA. It, it's been said, and I got at least a couple of notes this afternoon, I think we all did, that said, the more we, it's, that more the city acquiesces to HCD, the less chance we have as council members to defend our residents, and I thought that was something that was really important to think about, that I've said, and I've tried in closed session and open session over the last year and a half to try and get us to oppose SB9, to try and get us to join with other municipalities and regions to ask the state to audit the HCD requirements and try and change those, I haven't gotten anywhere, and, and as we've heard from planning tonight, it appears, and from the mayor, that there's probably no chance of getting anywhere, but I think many of our residents wanna hold out hope, not about the affordable housing requirement, but the overall picture of whether it's 8,895, 11,000, or 13,000 units, that the face of this beach city will forever be changed, and for many of residents, it won't be changed in a positive way. I had a question, actually, about Gelson's, or the 5.55, the 5%, 5%, 5% rule, when they get the bonus, the density bonus, shouldn't that be flipped to 15% at that point, not continue to be 5%, 5%, 5% of different income levels?
So for that particular project, 'cause it's under current rules, we don't have a 5.55 requirement in place, the minimum is actually 10%, and in that particular...
And they took, they did that?
Yeah, they, like, any, any developer can always choose to do more.
Would it be, would that apply to future projects, though?
That, that is what is, that, that is what is being proposed, yeah.
Okay, I, I had one more question, since you graciously got back up, I know you've had a long night in front of us, how many cities in California are officially out of compliance at this time?
In, let's see, in, in SCAG, I think that they have certified something, maybe close to 10 now?
So about 180-some-odd cities are out of compliance?
Yeah, I think last, last we checked, and we sort of hear, you know, rumors here and there.
Okay, so it's, it's not just Santa Monica?
No.
It is, basically, just of the SCAG area alone, it is the vast majority of cities.
Yeah, I mean, it's the whole, yeah, SCAG is the largest, you know, MPO.
Right, whether Sandbag or any of the other, or whatever it is, the other areas, so, it's not, I, I wanna reiterate, it's not just us, it is a vast majority of cities... It is a vast majority of cities in California are out of compliance, and all of them are scrambling?
Yeah.
And nobody's decide, has a group, they should fight back? I was sort of surprised at LA when they got a, what is it, another 250,000?
Well, they had to rezone for the 250,000s.
That's crazy.
By October. Um, LA's actually, um, got a draft in compliance letter. Long Beach has certified since, you know, we last...
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so, um, you know, it appears that they're, you know, that HCD is, is working, you know, they, they're willing to work with cities. Um, I think we just, in, in these past four months, they were between cycles, so the associate in Bay, Aberg, up in the, uh, Northern California, the Bay Area, their cycle is just starting, the cycle of review. So we caught them at a moment, we were able to get, um, a lot of attention and consultation to figure out, you know, what Santa Monica needed to do to address, um, HCD's comments.
So the last thing is that regardless of what we do tonight and what you do over the next few months, a lot of it's still quite theoretical, because as the mayor said, we may have a recession coming. Interest rates are rising, which means it's gonna be harder for people to get financing. We've been in the golden age of financing for projects. That's changing rapidly. So regardless of what we decide, how we vote, there is a good chance that we may look in four years and go, all right, HCD hasn't really been able to enforce anything because we've been doing our best efforts.
Yeah, I mean, like, like we said, and it's, this, this housing element process, the, the requirement is to plan. It's to plan for your arena capacity. It is not an obligation to build or to issue those...
Wait, what did you just say?
It's, it's an obligation to plan. This housing element process...
Not an obligation to build.
Correct, right, because the city, again, the city does not build housing, right?
Right, and we have no ability to force people into the city and say, you're buying this lot and you're building what we want you to build.
We only, we only control the regulatory environment, you know, we establish the standards, and so that's the expectation, is that, you know, you set the environment, like, to create the incentives for housing, but then what the private market does is, is truly out of our control, you know, at that point.
Thank you so much, and, and I never say it, but I appreciate your work tonight. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
At least you admitted it.
So I made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so I think we've been here. Does anyone else have anything more to say, or, good, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember De La Torre.
A call?
A poll.
Right now?
No.
Is it a high coup?
Councilmember Brock.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
I've been the no every time that you guys are putting...
Yes. Councilmember Negrete.
This is a tough one. I need to go to the bathroom, no. We have so much work to do. And I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmember Davis.
No.
Councilmember Parra.
No.
Mayor Hamerich.
Yes, I'm not leaving you out there. You want to change your vote? Look, guys, I...
I don't understand what just happened.
It failed five to two.
I, I mean, I, I have, I, well, I understand, but, I, I mean, I've voted no consistently because...
Well, so, okay, wait, oh, okay, so, so, um, let me just say that if we aren't going to forward this to HCD, then we need to sue them. We have two choices. We either do this or we sue, and we're gonna get sued, you know there are lawsuits, but I believe that there is a risk here, that this is arbitrary and capricious. And, um, a- and I think that, uh, I've said this before, uh, I do think there is, but I, if we aren't going to move forward, I mean, are we sending staff? I- if we aren't gonna accept this draft, what are we gonna, uh, direct staff to do?
Well, I know what I would direct staff to do. I mean, I, none of us who voted no got the opportunity to say why we voted no. I don't think we have to sue. I think what we do have to do, and I apologize to all of you, is we have to send staff back to address the concerns it caused us to vote no. Now, for some, that may be insurmountable. For me, it's not, but that's the difference. I mean, I don't know.
These are opposite concerns. You have a group of people who, uh, I'm sorry, we have a gr- we have a group of people who think we should be doing a lot more development, and a group of people who think we should be doing a lot less development, a- and those are the two groups. So I want to see all of you give direction to staff, all, all five of you. So we've heard, uh, Councilmember Davis's direction, you want them to go back and do what you want, right?
Well, that's kind of a vague statement, I can be...
You tell them what you want.
All right, so I will explain my reason for voting no, and hopefully I can be somewhat articulate about it. I actually think staff did a really good job on, on the bulk of the problems that were identified by HCD in their letter to us. But I do think, as I said earlier, that the one area where we have not, uh, crossed the bar, and that is affirmatively furthering fair housing. I honestly believe that the only way that we are going to truly affirmatively further fair housing, and I don't want to upzone the R2, the R4s, or any of the multifamily, but I do think we have to look at ways in which we can produce more, and what I'll call, for lack of a better term, traditional multifamily housing in existing R1 zones, and whether that's with the use of an affordable housing overlay that applies to the R1 zones, whether it's, um, limited rezoning of certain parts of the R1 zones, or any other, uh, tactics or strategies that staff thinks might work. But I think unless and until we actually provide for the building of true multifamily housing, not ADUs, but true multifamily housing, and by the way, I support Councilmember Brock talking about courtyard apartments and things like that. I think those would contribute and be lovely in the R1 zones. I'm not talking about building 25-story Cabrini Greens, and I don't think anyone who supports housing is. But the fact of the matter is that affirmatively furthering fair housing says we need to go into our highest resource zones, which are, for better or for worse, our R1 zones, and figure out how to accommodate more people living there. And so for me, the direction that I would give to staff is to come back with a plan that would actually rezone the R1s in some capacity, it doesn't have to be a blanket rezoning, or provide a 100% affordable housing overlay that would apply to the R1 zones, that would give us the possibility of building multifamily housing in the existing R1 zones. And I think that would get us over the hump in terms of affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Okay, Councilmember Parra, you want to go?
Um, so my only concern, and I think that, you know, staff did an excellent job in, in trying to, to meet the, the requirements and the criteria of HCD. My only concern, um, at this point in time is Bergamot, and, uh, I do not agree with Davis. I don't think that rezoning R1 zones is a save-all, do-all, and so I wouldn't agree with that. But my concern at this point in time is, is Bergamot. Happy to talk about the bus, but, and maybe switch it up, throw the buses at Bergamot, but, no, thanks.
Councilmember Negrete.
I'm gonna let Brock go.
Okay, is he speaking for you?
No, but I'm gonna let him go before me.
Okay.
He has his hand up.
So I, I voted no for one simple reason. So I, I heard everything that went on tonight, and I understand everything that was said tonight. I am concerned that many residents, as I think I said in, in one of my closing, uh, blurbs, that, uh, I'm concerned that while we approve the housing element, we simultaneously do our best to fight the state requirement. And, uh, what I'm concerned with is, has, I think it was Xena Josephs said earlier tonight, um, that we're just acquiescing and not simultaneously saying this is unfair. And I think we have to stand up for the residents of the city and our city. So I'm happy to change our vote, my vote, if indeed, um, staff and, and our city manager and everyone will say that we will also do our best to join with other cities if there is any possible road forward to have HCD reconsider the requirements and be fair. And that's where I am. So I, I didn't have a chance to really declare that. That's my reason for voting no. I understand what, what we're up against, I understand where we're probably gonna go, and I understand very succinctly the statement, um, by our planning staff at the end, that this is all theoretical, that none of this may come true, but residents are worried about their neighborhoods. So even though, yes, I know it's boulevards. So for me, all I need, and I'm happy to flip my vote, in, before we're done with this matter, as long as I believe that we will also do our best to try and find other solutions. Thank you.
Councilmember De La Torre.
For me, I think there's an opportunity here, um, to, to look at, you know, uh, uh, rent, Torca, Torca 2.0, you know, looking at, like, uh, where we rent her, from tenant, tenant to homeowner, uh, and, and I haven't seen that articulated very well. I'd like to see more, a more robust program and assessment of how, how we might, uh, bring best practices in that field, in that area, uh, here to our city. Um, I think also there's an opportunity for us to discuss, um, you know, the impact of, uh, resident displacement, you know, with, 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 uh, you know, market and median income, uh, uh, housing and the creation of that, what we've seen in the city. And, um, I think that...
I'm sorry, say that, that made us, say that again.
Well, yeah, you, you, you create more market rate housing, or even median income rate housing.
So moderate rate housing, is that what you mean?
Correct.
When you said median, you mean moderate rate housing?
Or moderate rate housing, whatever, you know?
Uh, I just wanted to, no, it's workforce housing.
Yeah, correct. So, so, you know, we, we exacerbate gentrification and resident displacement in the city of Santa Monica. And so, um, I think there's an opportunity for us to look at sort of, you know, the impact of, of, um, upzoning, you know, on, on these communities, and I know that there's some protections. I, I'd like to see the Pico Neighborhood Zoning District, the concept that was discussed, uh, before the Pico Well-being Project was, uh, implemented by staff years ago. Um, I think there's an opportunity to revisit that concept of, of, uh, Pico Neighborhood Zoning District, and so I'd like to engage in that type of, uh, discussion and, and those ideas that surfaced during those initial discussions.
Yes, and Councilmember Negrete.
I wanted to provide some balance between, um, what Mayor Hamerich said. There definitely, we are echoing up here, this polarizing voice in the community, which is, you know, this supposedly, right, anti-development, over-development. And I think there's more to that, I think there's a middle ground. And so my issue with the housing element is, first and foremost, what I mentioned earlier, is we're given all this information, there's modules that would be nice to be, to see, there's, there's other things that we would like to look at, at least for myself, to see what this is really gonna look like in the future. Um, and you guys put a lot of work, there's a lot of reports, it's a lot of reading, a lot of graphs, and then we're told, well, this is, you know, nothing's necessarily really gonna happen, you're just voting on this stuff so that we can suffice what the state is asking. I think in agreeance with what, um, Councilmember Davis says, I don't think it's addressing the fair housing, um, issue that we have. These numbers that are thrown out, that we're being forced to build, I don't think are solving affordability, or equity, or inclusion in our community. I think the things that we're talking about up here are other ways to get to that. So I don't know how we find the balance between adjusting those numbers and instead creating opportunities for people to be homeowners and not just renters. Um, so I don't know what my, my direction is not clear. My direction is that I would like, and I'll give you some clarity on this, yes, I, I agree that we need to look at outside Bergamot Station, that's one. Um, but the things that we would like to see, like open courtyard buildings and not big high rises with just corridors for families, I'm not really sure how to put that into staff direction, because these are things that are futuristic and based on the project itself. I just know that I don't think we're addressing fair housing with this, and if we vote on this and say, well, nothing will maybe happen, we're exposing the city for it potentially to happen. And my biggest fear is displacement, even though we say that that's not gonna happen because we're not gonna upzone R4 or whatever, I still feel that ultimately that's what happens. I've seen it happen. I have been paid to move out of an apartment building on Fourth and Ashland by a landlord because they came over and took it over. Now there's a community corp organization that owns it, but I have been the subject to that, and that is the fear. I know it's frustrating because we're being told, well, we have to do this, we have to do this, it's not fair. There's seven of us up here who take the bullets from the community and the responsibility for pushing these things through, and it doesn't feel, at least I'm speaking only for myself, that we have enough time, and I know it may feel that way, but it just doesn't feel that way. It doesn't feel like we have enough time to digest everything and make a comfortable vote on this. And I also agree that I think there's other things we need to be doing to, to giving opportunity for people to live in other areas of the community. I know it makes certain communities feel uncomfortable at the thought of, uh, the landscape of their, um, zip code changing, but we can't keep redlining, so to speak, and keeping people out of other communities. If we're really talking about fair housing and addressing equity and, um, inclusion when it comes to affordability, we have to look at it a little bit differently.
So you're right, so I, I'm pretty frustrated, and I'll tell you why. This process has been going on for, what, two and a half years, Jing? Yes, people, we had working groups doing it two and a half years ago, I mean, working on it, a- and, and suddenly, a- a- and people were talking about all of these ideas and more ideas and things they wanted to do, and I wish that people sitting on this dice had been involved or more involved in those working groups and, and had expressed more of their ideas. But I just have to say that it's pretty frustrating this long time later, and I am not happy with the situation or the housing element to have these new ideas, right, a- and, um, brought up as inclusions in the housing element that really, uh, you know, aren't moving forward affirmatively furthering fair housing, affordable housing, or even, you know, uh, workforce housing. I mean, we are moving, ba- we are not giving any guidance for doing anything meaningful for helping the condition of people who want to live here and can't afford to, or people who want to live here and there aren't apartments here. So, uh, so let's hear what, uh...
So, I mean, I think, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing here is just, um, a lot of frustration and concern with, with this process, not necessarily with just with this housing element, but all the, all the requirements that the state is imposing. That is, that is acknowledged, that is understood. This is a very, this is a different housing element cycle. It's different, you know, would we, would we plan in this way as professional planners? No, I can honestly say we wouldn't, you know, do it in this manner. Um, you know, you can see the work that we would do in the loose process and the DCP and the thoughtfulness and the engagement and, you know, all the aspects that we consider, right? That is, for better or for worse, it is not the charge that we are being given by the state at this point, you know? And I, I hear you in terms of, um, these concerns, but I do want to distinguish between, um, you know, what we need to do to get to a compliant housing element and what you want to desire to do in shaping Santa Monica. There, there's, what you do in this housing element is a minimum, so if we want to pursue something like a Torca 2.0, we want to open up ownership opportunities, that, that was not a comment from HCD, that that was something like fundamentally missing from our housing element. You know, you can still do those things, it doesn't necessarily hold up this housing element process, if that makes sense, right? That, that is within the council's authority to direct the creation of those sorts of programs. We, we have not received that sort of direction, you know, through this process, and so I, I just want to, you know, like, we, we, we hear you, like, I, we've heard this, we've been doing this for two and a half years, we've been hearing this in the community. This is, it is a very, very different, not Santa Monica way, you know, approach to this plan, and we're doing the best we can, given the disparate opinions and voices, not just on this council, but throughout this community and housing providers and people involved in housing preservation. So as I just kind of heard, you know, the listing of things, I think we're just trying to, you know, distinguish on what are concrete things that you're seeing in the housing element and, you know, like I said, what the red lines we're presenting to you tonight are the results of consultations with HCD. They have seen these red lines, they have told us that preliminarily these do meet, um, you know, they, they believe, like, we're heading in... we're heading in the right direction, you know, to achieve, to achieve a compliant housing element. But if there are specific things that you want, you know, understand that those are things that could either be a separate council direction, you know, it, it's not necessarily something that needs to be within housing element law.
Yes.
If I may, I, I, between Jing and Susan Cohen, I'm sorry to call you out, Susan, I would like to just spend a little bit of space of talking about our advocacy. Since the housing element was adopted in October, so, council...
So, the city attorney, and I don't know if you had something, and I don't know what you're gonna say, but, and, and I don't want to interrupt you, or whether it would move us forward.
No, I was just going to say you had talked about potential litigation. I'd suggest a closed session.
Okay.
Maybe next week or the council meeting after that, to discuss the potential litigation.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't, okay, so, Susan?
I'm not sure exactly what the city manager was referring to. Are you talking about the extension, or the, the other advocacy regarding...
Well, I, I'm addressing a few things. So, one, I, I want to go back to when the council adopted the housing element. We were directed to compose a, a very lengthy letter with the mayor outlining not only our past success around delivering affordable housing, but also exposing all of the concerns expressed here this evening towards a housing element. I would suggest that was met with some tension throughout the state, but we still took a very bold stance in articulating our circumstance relative to other cities. Subsequent to that, we did spend a lot of time reaching out to both of our state representatives, both on the assembly side and state side, and engage our lobbyists. In fact, we submitted a letter to the Assembly, Assemblymember Wicks, and can't recall the other person, articulating and taking the position with SCAG, pretty much being very clear that we had, took great exception to the Reno process, but as the city attorney has mentioned, that we don't have a lot of room to maneuver with that. So, from our perspective, we don't really have any other avenues to express or advocate for, against what's happening in the Reno process. We have been very clear in that, and certainly, Susan, you can talk to many conversations you've been a part of, where we have tried very, very hard to express our strong position and concern with the housing element, but I, I, we're, we're running out of ammunition in that regard.
Yeah, and something I want to reiterate, which is what Jing said, which is, this is just the draft, right? You still have the time to adopt the plan. This gets it back on the table, and again, it doesn't rule out some of the things that you've expressed interest in, in implementing additional things that are above and beyond what the minimum requirements are to have a substantial housing element. So, you know, I think what she said is very important to understand. Again, it keeps it on the table, and nothing prevents us from continuing to advocate through our lobbyists. I know Sue Hamerich has made efforts as well, and so, just ask you to consider that.
So, council, are we ending it here, or do I hear a motion for reconsideration?
Can we just clarify? So, reconsidering means we're pushing this through with the idea that we can't go and mess with the numbers. You're saying we can go above and beyond in the draft to add, expand on that a little bit.
Well, I think the numbers are, are, I mean, those are pretty much set, set, because those are what Jing has worked out with HCD, but some of the other things regarding...
Zoning?
Yeah, the overlay zone, the Torca, the, even the open space, like, I think those things possibly can still be massaged into the implementation of the plan, so I would not leave them off the table entirely, just because we're submitting this, but I think Jing should elaborate further on this.
Well, and, and can I ask a question? And we can run a parallel course, is that right, city attorney?
Yeah, councilor, remember, this is really the baseline. This is about the numbers. The things about garden apartments, and where exactly is it going to go, you can add all that. This is really just the baseline numbers that we're talking about.
But when I'm talking about a parallel program, in other words, if we did want to do some other kind of objection, and, and I don't think, look, we are a model, we are, don't want to be with cities who don't do what they're supposed to do. We have always done what we're supposed to do, and, and I hate to keep saying that, but we need to stick with the other cities like us, and there aren't very many. I mean, the list is short, and, and none of them are like us, really, other than one. And, and so, I think that the idea of, of joining forces with a bunch of cities who don't believe in what we believe in does not help us and will not help us win, but I think that if we wanted to talk about, it's something we should talk about in closed session, in other words.
Right, council, in other words, all of the things you've talked about tonight, you can do in a parallel track of getting this approved.
Right. And still improve the, still pass it on, right?
Right.
There's nothing, it, it's all within our power.
Can I ask one question? Sorry, is, are we at risk of losing Section 8 housing? Because there was a community member that was concerned, or that was told today in some sort of presentation, that if we don't pass this through, we're at risk of losing our Section 8 housing or vouchers.
No, you know what? They were confused about the idea of losing affordable housing or not having affordable housing. When you can't use a Section 8 voucher for, I think it's six months, you lose it. So, to that extent, if we don't have properties that you could use a Section 8 voucher in, if we don't have apartments and things, that voucher could go to LA or somewhere else, I don't know. But, but it's, we don't lose any vouchers directly because of that.
Yeah, and I, I think in, in sort of like, you know, the listing of, of the issues that council members raised, one thing to be mindful of is that, you know, when we talked about the program, so Chapter 5, all of the implementation programs, whatever you write in there will be monitored and enforced. So, you know, when we talk about, like, wanting to include a program on home ownership, the distinction between that being a policy you want to explore versus something you are committing to doing, and that HCD will monitor and enforce upon, is a really big difference, given that we have no identified funding source for such a thing, or have even explored what it would take to create something like that. There, there actually is a policy in the housing element, you know, there's Chapter 3, which is the goals and policies. There is Policy 2.5 that talks about exploring opportunities for affordable homeownership. You know, that is, that is in there as a policy, but again, it doesn't preclude the council to direct the exploration of such a program, or the creation of such a program, or divert funding for that sort of a thing, or, you know, to, to look at that. Like I said, we just didn't receive that sort of majority direction through this housing element process, and, you know, I just wanted to, like, that, to, to make it a program in the housing element, it means that we need to come up with a metric, who is it targeting, what's the timing? Like, you need to have really thought through the specifics of what do you mean, you know, about a housing element program? You, you cannot use words that say "explore" or "consider," they, that is not enforceable by their standards, and so all of that language was taken out in these red line revisions.
Councilmember Brock?
So, I presume that planning, and our city manager, and community directors, and everyone else are hearing that we're frankly grumpy about this. I'd put it a lot stronger, but I'm trying to be G-rated. But what I do hear, and I just heard from Mayor Hamerich, I've heard from Councilmember De La Torre, we are concerned about Section 8. We're concerned about expansion of pod. We're concerned about making sure our city retains unique character, and that we are a passionate city about caring about our residents. And I think that's important, and if planning is, is saying they're hearing the other things that we want to explore, that Councilmember Davis's parking scheme needs to be explored, even though I hate saying that, but I'll go with that. I, I think, if, if we're hearing that, then I will move to reconsider this motion.
Second. Can I second? No, somebody who said no has to second.
No. Anyone can second.
Oh, I'll second.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yeah, you know, there were, there were a lot of concerns brought up on the dais today, some very important, some that have been brought up for many years in the city, and I think it's important for staff to, to hear it. You know, there's opportunities with Bergamot, you know, there's council member concern around that, resident displacement, gentrification, these are issues that are very real. And so, you know, I, I, I will, I will vote, you know, to, to reconsider as well, as long as, you know, these, these items are, are front and center on the table and, and we, we address them, you know, that, that, that's, that's important for me, and, and I know it's important for others on the council as well.
Okay, so, let's try it again, let's, well, first we have to vote to move, right, vote to reconsider, right? So, let's start with that. Madam Clerk, right? So, this is, we are voting now on whether we should reconsider our prior decision. It's a yes or no.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
And Mayor Hamerich?
Yes, so that passes seven to zero, and now, would you like to make the next motion?
I move that we, I don't have the, what's the original motion?
That we present the red line draft to the, to HCD.
I move that we will present the red line draft to HCD, and that, and that's it.
And with our, with work ongoing on all of the concerns raised by all the various councilmen?
Yes. That none of us are buckling, we want to hear, we want further action.
Okay. So, so, move by Brock, seconded by De La Torre, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Hamerich?
Yes. Yes, please.
So, I, I, I think the reasons for my no vote are obvious. One is I obviously continue to have concerns that this is not a compliant draft, simply because it's deficient in the area of affirmatively furthering fair housing, and I also want to state that I do have concerns that the constraint, which I sort of identified as political will relating to minimum parking requirements, implementation of state density bonus law, and some other issues that were, I think, obvious from my comments, need to be addressed before we'll have a compliant housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June 28th, at 5:30 PM. Everyone have a great evening, and I will see you next Tuesday.